...and the ongoing official member of the board, also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Director. Ms. Edgar, can you please call the board?
Mr. Bartle.
Here.
Mrs. Becker.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Here.
Ms. Seeling.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Workman.
Here.
Let's stand as we're looking for the question. Please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, current agenda, any changes?
No. No approval?
Second.
We will be seconded to approve the agenda and the discussion on favor say yes.
Aye.
Both motion passes. 5.01, discipline data, this is an information item. And a couple of housekeeping items I'd like to address before we start. I would love for this conversation to be as open and authentic as possible with a lot of conversation gathered here so that we can get the information we need, ask questions. I also don't want it to be dominated by a couple of voices, including my own. Are we more comfortable with raising hands and getting called on or can we just kind of let things flow and just have a discussion reminding ourselves that we need to hear all voices? Does that work? Yes ma'am.
I think perhaps with so many of us at the table, the hand raising might be a little bit easier because if two or three people start to talk at once, I mean, I don't know, maybe it would work fine. I'm in teacher mode right now, sorry ma'am.
Does hand raising work then? Any objections?
No.
We'll go with that. Could I also remind us that especially now, our school district, after getting substantial input from the community, created and approved a foundation for a strategic plan and the Basis React, three universal goals, access and equity, student achievement and accountability. And one of the core beliefs is that we must understand the academic, cultural and social needs of each student. The discipline data that the board is presented twice a year is a piece of a much bigger and ongoing conversation that we have as a district in which we are absolutely committed that all students have to be given equitable chances to succeed. This isn't just a twice-a-year presentation, we are committed to that. We are also keenly aware of the fact that there are significant demographic disparities that exist in this district and we are committed in spirit and in writing to addressing those. This discussion, I think, could easily take up a week. We have so many different issues, we have so many different programs in the district, and so many people working towards the same end, but it deserves probably a week of discussion. And I know for a fact that this happens on the community level, at the district level, at the school level. But at the end of this evening, what I'm hoping is that we will leave not only more educated about what this district is doing, but also that we can arrive at a consensus in terms of what kind of data is going to be most useful to the board as the board makes its decisions regarding equity. The board, our venue, our wheelhouse is policy and budget. But what does the board need to know and in what format should that data be presented so that we can make the most informed decisions? And it's going to be useful, I think, for the board, for those of you in the buildings to let us know if there are data that you need that you're not getting or that you're particularly interested that the board has. So as you talk about the program that you're most closely involved in, if you could sort of ensure that that's where we end up. We all understand that kids aren't data and that there are plenty of discussions that are going on beyond this, but going forward, we know that we need some sort of an easy-to-understand format and agreed-upon dataset so that we can make the decisions we need to make. Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Yes, the plan we have tonight is we have different speakers lined up to remind the board all the work that the district has been doing. We decided after each section would be a good time to ask questions about that section instead of trying to go through all of it and then try to remember all your questions. So we will take a break after each section for board members to ask questions and then, as Director Marvin said, after that, the board's responsibility is to make a decision on what you need for, as a governing board, to be a governing board, what kind of data do you need. So we're not going to let you lead tonight until you make that decision. You can't vote on anything, but we'll have a consensus tonight that this is, are you happy with the data that you received the last time? If not, what other additional data do you need to be a school board? Okay, so I think first off for us is Heather Roman is going to talk about professional development.
All right. And excuse me.
Sure.
For all of us as we're talking about things, at least the first time through, can we not just give the acronym for our program, but explain what the acronym means? Thank you.
Sure. Call me on it if I forget.
I think that I will.
All right, so I'm going to start with district-wide professional development and then I'll look at some things that sites are doing and then we'll look at things that individuals have engaged in and then talk a little bit about book studies. A few of the pieces I will let Eric and Levi talk a little bit more in depth about, but I'll make sure that I kind of talk through those at the beginning. So we're just gearing up for back-to-school week next week. We'll have Dr. Howard here next Friday and Dr. Troyer. We're looking at foundations of culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and our focus is academic vocabulary. So all teachers K through 12 will be part of that conversation. And then in January, we'll be looking at literacy practices. We're also engaging in jumpstart training. So last year, we had four sites that worked through some jumpstart training with Dr. Holly and his colleagues. Eric's going to talk a little bit more about what that looks like, but this year, we'll be engaging in that training for all of our sites. So each site will have a cohort of teachers. Really trying to get at implementation, so we know training is important, but we have to see implementation, we have to see how is it taking place in the classroom. So that's what the coaching focus is really about. Dr. Holly has also worked with our PBIS leadership teams, really to look at more restorative practices, so not as much punitive, but restorative kinds of things. In Envoy, Levi's going to talk a little bit more about Envoy. All of our teachers K through 8 have been trained in Envoy nonverbal strategies and so we're really trying to make sure we connect that to our equity work and look at why is Envoy effective and in those sites where we have high implementation, what are we seeing in terms of decreased behavior referrals and increased engagement? We're also really working on mathematics, so trying to open up our mathematics pathway. It used to be that you had to have all kinds of tests and then you got into that advanced math pathway. Now you can really opt-in at sixth grade if you want to engage in the challenge. And so we're seeing some great things because of that openness. We also know we need to do more professional development with our teachers on open-ended math tasks, number talks and problem strings at the high school level. So those are some district-wide pieces. Questions about that before I go to site work?
I'm just wondering, is someone going to explain very, very briefly what culturally and linguistically appropriate language is?
Sure. So...
Just kind of snapshot of what...
Yeah, I'll give you a little snapshot and you guys jump in if you want to add. Really, it's taking the needs of your students, what you know about them and planning really intentionally with those students and their backgrounds in mind. So instead of having a set lesson plan that you're going to do no matter who you have in front of you, your first hour looks the same, your third hour looks the same, your seventh hour, you're really looking at who are those students in front of you and making intentional decisions about what kinds of activities would work. So if I know that Amy's social and she needs to process, then I'm going to make sure that there are activities where she can talk with a partner and then talk in a group to process. If I know that Janie is a thinker and she needs to be able to write, then I'm going to make sure that I have some opportunities for students to do that. And then beyond that, knowing what are our students bringing with us in terms of their background knowledge and how does that impact their lesson? Do you want to add? Okay.
And I'll add a little bit about the Envoy. I think we've informed the board in the past, but it's nonverbal classroom management strategies. The concept behind Envoy is a lot of little behaviors. If you use nonverbals to correct it, that keeps it from turning into a bigger incident than where the student would have to be removed from the classroom and go to the office. So it's really giving teachers strategies on how to address little behaviors nonverbally so the student can get refocused and remain in the classroom for learning.
Yes ma'am.
And I'm curious, and perhaps as other individuals may speak to a lower level of discussion, will any of this relate to education outcomes or are you simply focused on discipline reduction strategies?
Oh, absolutely. I'll start with mathematics. We know that if students have access to that accelerated math pathway, we're going to see higher outcomes, higher achievement levels. So we know that engagement is a piece of it, but we want those higher achievement levels, that's where we're really aiming. That's our focus.
Do the students need to opt-in at the beginning of the year or can they be part of the way through there and say, you know, this level's just too easy for me, I want to move on?
Yeah, that's what we want, is that to be, right now, it's very open, so if we see three weeks in that they need to move to a more challenging setting, we make that change. Before, it used to be that you had to wait and then there were barriers in the way and a lot of times, kids didn't know that they were able to opt-in. And so then sometimes we were playing catch-up because then when they found out they were good at math, it was too late. And now we really are trying to be nimble and flexible and if we see that, then we're able to provide that opportunity. And then I think in addition to that, you can't just put the students in the accelerated classes without having appropriate scaffolds and supports. So really thinking about what kind of academic seminar kinds of pieces and how do we train teachers to make sure that there are tasks that everybody can engage in and be successful with. So I'll talk a little bit about site work. So some of the big initiatives that we've worked on, we have trauma-informed community schools. So we have three sites that are community schools. You've heard probably a lot about that, but really making sure that our students' needs are being met on all levels. We have turnaround arts happening at Riverside. So thinking about, well, how do we nourish the soul, not just the cognitive part, but how do we make sure that kids are getting those opportunities with music and art? The REA has sponsored an equity series and so we've had a series of speakers that have worked on equity topics and teachers have been able to engage in a combination of learning. So they join the cohort, but then continue to learn together. PBIS?
REA is our teachers union.
Thank you. Thank you. And then a couple of conferences, so teachers that are interested and mental health practitioners that are interested in learning more and going deeper, we have the Midwest Trauma-Informed Schools Conference that will be happening and then Wings to Fly Conference as well. So we're sort of leading the charge in some of those areas with making sure that we have networking opportunities for teachers to be able to come together and learn more.
Could you tell us what the Wings to Fly conferences?
Yes, so it's mental health focused. And so mental health practitioners, anyone who really works with student mental health can engage in that conference. They're using a lot of different methods of learning, so they have workshops, they have discussions. Anybody else want to add to Wings to Fly?
And maybe this is covered later this evening, but this all sounds like good stuff for the teachers, would we have that engages the community in these same topics that would be just as educational for parents to understand?
Right, right. So my focus mostly has been with what our staff is engaging in, but I think there's definitely opportunity. Many of our sites are doing book studies, reading together, and I think that would be a great opportunity to do some kinds of things where we could have community and staff working on those topics.
Right, so I know last year, there was a couple of engagements that involved the community. So again, hopefully it's somewhere tonight and one of the gen items is community engagement as well.
We did, I do know at Sunset Terrace, we hosted a Envoy Parent Night, so parents could come and learn what training our staff are getting, but also learning strategies they can use at home with their children. I know that's one specifically that had connected to...
Was it pretty well attended?
Yes, yes it was, I was there.
And then this next Friday, when we have Dr. Troyer and he's also doing an evening session for parents in the community to hear about the training that he's doing with our staff further that day.
And Heather, did you mention that Dr. Troyer is an expert from northern Minnesota on indigenous people?
Yes, yep, so he's from Bemidji State and he'll talk a lot about the academic opportunity gap and he does a lot of speaking about just how you can get to know your students and how you can bring that into the classroom. Many people are excited to see him because some of our teachers have seen him at the Hormel Institute. He's been there the last two or three years and so they came back and said, we definitely have to have him. Then we do have a staffing change as well to kind of support our equity work. We have an Equity Implementation Associate, that's a new person who will help deepen that connection with Dr. Holly's work and really help teachers implement it in the classroom. So that's another piece.
If I may quickly.
Yeah, sure.
So that all might know, then, the district has then come up with a definition for equity or a policy regarding equity?
Part of the G D Plan, we have a definition. The Policy Committee has to work on creating an equity policy, but we do, that was approved a couple of meetings ago, part of the three goals that we approved and we did have a definition correctly in there as well.
And I could just add to that, the Student School Board, there's been some discussion, we're rethinking exactly how that's going to work and we're thinking that it might be great for the Student School Board to come up with a draft equity policy. So it will come from our secondary students across the district who meet once a month and see what they would have as a policy and then go from there. We really want to listen more to our students and to engage them more directly in the work that we're doing and get their feedback about their schools, what's working, what's not working, what their experience is in terms of, especially in terms of equity issues.
Great. And then we've done lots of kinds of learning around just individual needs, individual stories. So something we do with our new teachers is there's a TED Talk called "The Danger of a Single Story" and so we really talk about what happens when you only have one story about a person in your mind and how that can be limiting. So we have conversations about that. We've had Sam Simmons come and talk about historical trauma. We have a session called "Not Your Mascot" and now there's a new session called "Decolonizing Your Classroom." So really thinking about what are some of those stereotypes that can be portrayed and continued on if we're not careful. And then Melissa Brandt does a session on poverty in the classroom, really helping our teachers to think about what are some of those things that you may not be thinking about in the classroom. She, one of the things people really talk about is as they come in, usually there's people that come in a minute or two late and she's very careful to welcome them, to make sure that they feel safe and secure. And then she talks to them about, how do you welcome your students when they come in a minute or two late and what message might that send? And then we've really worked hard on the ACES with Michael Benjamin from Prairie Care. And then Brian Bowden talks a lot about why do we have all these groups here and what a benefit that is to having that diversity here in Rochester. So those are some individual kinds of offerings that teachers can opt into to continue their own learning.
Heather, could you just briefly explain who, what Melissa Brandt's position is with the district and then what ACES?
Sure. So Melissa is our in-transition specialist, so she helps with students that are homeless and/or in transition, so they have housing that isn't stable. And so she'll help us to make sure that they have what they need and then also just help sites to be able to meet the needs of those students. And then the ACES study is a study that really talks about what are some of the effects that you have as a child and then you look at what are some of those things that may be impacting you now? Amy can maybe speak more to that.
It's really about the trauma that we have happened in childhood or now we even know it's perhaps a generation or two before that would be affecting brain, genetics and other things and then it potentially comes out in academic or behavioral ways.
So adverse childhood experiences?
Yes. You're welcome. All right. So I think that's a bit of a summary on professional development. There's more, I think, even than that, but that kind of summarizes the district initiatives, some site initiatives and then some individual kinds of learning that we're supporting for teachers.
Ms. Seeling.
Heather, can you talk about the staff that goes through these trainings? Does this include paraprofessionals or is this just licensed staff?
Yes, so on the 24th, next Friday, it will be all licensed staff. On the Tuesday, we have a variety of sessions and that is our certified staff. But we do have a variety of offerings for both certified staff and then our paraprofessionals and others that work with our students. And one thing that we're really working hard on is making sure that we do provide quality training for paraprofessionals. Whenever we do, they're so grateful to have the training and it makes such a difference in their understanding. So we really have tried to be intentional about making sure we have those opportunities for those groups as well. They're actually coming or they're invited to be there on Friday, the 24th.
And I don't know if Levi, you're going to talk about it or not, but we do have some of our staff that we consider to be experts in Envoy and they have been training paraprofessionals, not giving them the full training that the teacher's gone through, but a condensed version so they can also use those strategies when they're working with students.
Real quickly, and I don't want to get into a big discussion about this now, but I would be interested in knowing with all these different programs that we are implementing or have implemented, is how will they be evaluated for their effectiveness? I understand that the first year you have a program, you really can't say it's working or it's not working, but will there be specific outcomes or things we can point to as data pieces to say, this is, Envoy is working? Because at some point, we do have to set the budget. So I think this, for me as a board member anyway, this would be helpful information. But like I said, we don't need to get into a discussion about it right now.
Well, I'll touch on it briefly and I think I've said this to the board before, we're not Mayo Clinic. We can't give half of our kids Envoy strategies, the other half, you're getting nothing at all. Doesn't work very well in the classroom. We have done some, we have some preliminary numbers that I would hate to say, yeah, I'm sold that it was Envoy, but we've looked at some of the classroom teachers that are certified in Envoy or according to their administration, implement the strategies very well and have seen considerable drop in their officer referrals and behaviors. But as I said, we're not medicine. I could say, yes, it's Envoy, but Mark would remind me that there's so many other factors that could play into that. A lot of people try to say, yes, this is what got the outcomes that those teachers got. I'm sure it contributed to it, but I can't say that was the only thing that did that. So it is a little more difficult than in medicine where you can really do those types of studies. But ultimately, for example, in Envoy, we hope that we're reducing kids' student behavior and being sent to the office and things like that. So obviously look at those numbers, knowing though that there could be other factors that can contribute to those results.
I understand that, I mean, there are so many variables. I mean, you've brought this point up on multiple occasions, for example, why is a particular building working? Is it this one thing that this building is known for or is it this, or is it this, or is it this for behaviors? Has the students' life outside of school changed either positively or negatively? And you can't say it's due to Envoy specifically because of all these other variables. And I think that's a really important point to make.
It's a really good question and it's one, hopefully when we talk or hear some of the building principals too, they can let us know what they look at within their buildings because, you know, as you said, the same teachers who are getting Envoy have also been getting a lot of in-service about culturally responsive teaching and how to think differently about the kids who come in. They've been learning about historical trauma. So that rather than looking at kids who come in and say, this is a bad kid, you know, the question is, what is this child bringing with him or into their classroom and what can we do better for this kid based on what the background might be? So it is complex. Ms. Becker.
So kind of to piggyback on Julie's and also to help us decide at the end of the day what sort of data we need, because ultimately, like you said, we're policying the budget. So I think Julie's question is very appropriate as to, I mean, because I'm sure that, you know, each one of the strategies isn't without some sort of cost. So my question is what sort of software? I know we have some that classroom teachers can put in different pieces of information about each individual student. So is that something that we can really use, use the software to be putting in, you know, maybe the teacher at the beginning of the year has all these sort of extra trainings and, I mean, to really kind of help flush out, is it really Envoy? Is it really some of the other training? Is it really the, you know, that the student's family life really has turned around, you know, either positive or negative? So what are all the different things that we can put into the software to try to find maybe some patterns and then help the board decide to make the financial commitment because we do have actually some data behind it that shows that, yeah, it is due to this or, you know, whatever. So that would be my, to the principals and teachers in your buildings, you know, look at whatever piece of the software you can in the databases that they're all putting information into and try to figure out how can we extract the data and make meaningful conclusions from it.
Well, we do have Viewpoint. If you remember, fifteen years ago, we purchased that. But what that allows us to do is all of the data that we have on kids, discipline, academic, attendance, if we can generate reports. Say, for example, I want to look at fifth-grade boys that, I don't know, a bunch of categories and we can run a report, but I don't think there's ever exists any kind of software where you can say, every report is going to tell me specifically if it's just Envoy, it's a certain kind of result. I'm not aware of any. Probably the thing that's closest that we looked at a year or so ago had to do, we talked to some individuals from IBM and they were using Watson to basically what Viewpoint does, but analyzing it even more and saying, based on this child's needs, here's best practice. But I don't think there's anything that exists where you can pull out a specific program or something that you're using. or something that you're using and saying that just that getting the results. But like I said, we do have Viewpoint that does allow us to generate district-specific reports and building-specific reports based on the data that's in our Skyworks system.
Isn't there, doesn't John, isn't he using, John Carlson, using some, oh gosh, what's the name of it, to help with financial forecasting? But they also have a module, I believe, that is about individual students?
I know we have Guide K-12, which we used this spring.
It's part of the forecasting, it's part of that group.
I mean, one thing we track is we have PD Express, Professional Development Express, where you can see what classes teachers have taken. And one thing we started to look at is our class tool data, our teacher evaluation data, which tells us how deeply are we implementing the instructional practices that we know get results. And so that's been helpful to be able to see, okay, here's our district average and here's our site average and do we need to do more with, for instance, regard for student perspective, which would be student voice and student choice? But I don't think we've cross-referenced. So these teachers have gone to this, what does that look like in terms of?
And all I'm saying is, you know, because again, what we were, what us board members are supposed to be thinking about again is what sort of data do we want? And I'm trying to think about, well, what kind of data does, you know, I mean, the district produces thousands and thousands of pieces of data. And how can we actually use it? How can we use it to really help our students? And that's all I'm saying. And as a board member, if you want me to make a decision, well, I'm gonna, like you said, we need some sort of something behind it. So let's use what we have. Let's see, you know, maybe we do need to ask IBM again to say, okay, please, you know, this is the stuff we have. Can you, I mean, people write programs all the time. People write programs that interface with databases all the time. And what can we do? It's not a whole new thing. It takes some of the stuff we have, but we add a few more, a few more columns and it's potentially really helpful for our students.
That's called Viewpoint?
That's what we own.
The data warehouse.
That's called Viewpoint. Yes.
And we received some recommendations from our community focus team and they included some studies that had been done and interventions. And one of the studies said that none of the interventions that they used met the evidence-based standard, that you can't, they said that they were research-based, that the evidence-based standard is very difficult where you're dealing with children with so many variables. When children spend 10% K through 12, 10% of their time in school, how do you control for all of the other variables? So they said, sort of best practice is research-based, but that maybe the best way of gathering data about what's working is talking to the staff, listening to the staff, listening to the kids, listening to the parents. Because it's tough to measure, why is this kid doing better? And sometimes you just ask the kid, what happened? And very often we find out it's just, maybe it's just that one teacher. Maybe it's just something's happening at home. But I think when we listen to our staff and the kids, what programs seem to be helping them, I think that's useful information.
Well, and that's useful information, but that's, it doesn't need to be a computer-driven anything. I mean, that can be the staff survey or whatever.
Thank you, Jay.
I just want to offer, as a former building principal, I think data is important, but the human side of it and the classroom visits and walkthroughs and observations, I think Jared's going to talk about this too. You know, implementation science, when you're trying to improve whatever it is you've identified needs to be improved in your building, requires that you study it, that you do staff development and then study and watch and look for fidelity. So whether it's saying, we're going to do, we're going to use better questioning strategies in math, specific questioning strategies, or we're going to train our whole staff on envoy, that needs to be followed up with classroom visits, observations, feedback to staff. And as a building, then you look for, are these things happening? What parts of them are happening? What are we doing well? What's not going well? And then what's not going well, we go back and do more professional development until we have fidelity in our classrooms on that strategy. So to me, envoy, CLR, those things, we could look at data, we could find a software, but nothing replaces the human contact in the classroom observing and then providing feedback to staff on what more we can do.
So then it's not a software or computer-driven report. It's the, maybe it's more the principals need to come and speak to the board and say, you know what, all of us have gotten together and we all really feel, since we're just picking on envoy, envoy is really important. And so again, as a board member, then I'm going to have a really pretty good idea that, yeah, I should probably say, yeah, you know what, we should really go along with the money that's needed for envoy.
I think Jared's going to speak to that in his part about instructional rounds and how we watch for that fidelity and how it's translating in the data that we're seeing as far as student behavior needs.
Mr. Barlow?
So Director Berkman had kind of focused on the rate of return, my words. And so I think we're more, it seems like, are we more in the form of a question, are we simply focused on referral reduction or are we really focused on academic excellence? Because as I kind of, you know, hear those two things and some of what Director Becker is referring to as well, it leads me, and I'm of the mindset that everything should be geared toward academic excellence. If it's not a program, envoy by any other name, PBIS, it doesn't matter what it's called, if we're saying that's not the thing that is, numbers are being reduced and classroom behaviors are being changed, but say when the test scores or other metrics are released, are they, can we see something of a return on the reduction on referrals and liaison contacts and things like that? So I'm anxious to hear whoever will provide that information. I'm waiting to hear you speak about how that relates to academic excellence.
So a quick search on Viewpoint is it does look like the software that we'd need from a district point of view. The question becomes, it's just because we have it, does somebody truly know how to utilize it? And we can talk about that some other time. But when you look around the room with the concerns, it does look like something we could very much use.
And it is, we generate some district reports that we push out to the buildings, but then they also use it more specifically for their specific use. And we brought in several different principals, they would talk about differently how they use it, but there are standard district reports that we, on their building, that we make available to them and then they know how to use the system to generate any kind of report that they would like. So at this time, I think we'll have Levi, the principal of Quinones Middle School, talk a little more about envoy and how it's used in his building.
Thank you for letting me share. We talked a lot about envoy and it's another one of those wonderful acronyms, stands for Environmental Nonverbal Organizational Yard Sticks. And it has a number of factors as you get into it even further. And the first one's environmental, even how you set up the classroom and where the main learning zone is, whether it's the smart board or the technology in relationship to the door and the effect it has on students where if someone walks by the hallway, if your teaching point is too close to the door, the attention is drawn away. And why I bring that up is because the goal around it is to remove verbal clutter around behavior-engaging words, talking about behavior, so you can get to that curricular aspect and focus more time on the curricular things. That's one of the overarching themes of envoy. Now Heather shared that K-8 staff starting last year, and again, their plan is for any new staff this year, to receive the seven gems training. That's kind of the seven core tenants or principals, kind of the quick dive into the envoy strategies. There are more gems than just those seven. There's additional key gems and it keeps going deeper and deeper, the more staff want to dive in. Once the K-8 staff in a building get to that tipping point of critical mass that the majority have the same language around it is a key, they can all start speaking the same language of how it impacts students and how we can use those skills to change dynamics in a classroom. It was brought up before about paraprofessionals. There was a specific push when we were doing our early release dates for PD a couple of years ago, especially at the elementary schools where schools were paired up to work with paraprofessionals as well to make sure that they understood the tenants' basic principles of envoy. Because if there's more than one adult in a classroom, the adults are expected to sync up and be on the same page around some of the nonverbal gestures and mannerisms that need to happen. So they have gotten some very basic training from our people who've taken envoy before or some of our coaches that have been trained in the buildings. Another push over the last about eighteen months has been to train green chair coaches. They call it a green chair coach because when they started doing it, all the chairs were green. That's really the bottom line. But that name is caught on, and the green chair coaches are basically people who have shown interest, passion, dedication to really make this and bring this further. Through that intensive green chair coaching week, you can then work with other staff in the building to coach them around the seven gems and the gems beyond, and they give you strategies. Now what they talk about in this week is, as you dive into envoy, it's really not just about the nonverbals, it's about the relationship. When the coaching relationship, it's between the coach and the teacher. And they show you how, as you coach them, it's coaching the teacher about the relationship with the class or individual. And it's getting all the students into that group dynamic and looking at the advanced dynamics of groups and how they act and react to different subtleties. Part of that is why it's so imperative for the paraprofessionals to be synced as well. So through those relationships, you build skills. And often the coaches that have worked with a teacher, more often they can go for certification. Certification is a process where the team we've kind of contracted with is Nancy Burns' team can come down and certify teachers. We have a number of teachers almost in every elementary or K-8 building in our district that have some certified teachers in the building. And that means that the seven gems are kind of at a habit level. They can do it almost all the time fairly routinely. And what envoy Michael Grinder, who created the program, says, that's when you're really right to go deeper and really explore some of those advanced dynamics. That's when you're ready for some of the small group training or they call it cat in the doghouse training to deal with and give strategies for the outliers that aren't going to conform to the traditional group. But again, it comes back to a relationship, preserving that relationship being healthy and that's one of the things, healthy classroom is a part of it. How do you maintain the positive image for your room and the students in it? How do you work together? And the very practical thing with envoy that they bring in is what's called an easier day or a harder day. And just honestly, Halloween elementary school is a harder day. Not that they have their sugar, they're excited about getting it. And it's a different balance than a random Tuesday in September when everyone's there excited to learn and grow. So just some of those honest conversations that, yep, there are some harder days, that validates the person and goes about, that's a good thing. And that ties into some of the work that Dr. Holly does. When Dr. Holly was here with us back this past year in April, he talked through one of his culturally responsive strategies, the call and response. He basically outlined it exactly as one of the envoy seven gems, the above pause whisper. He talked about, you call, respond, that's the above. He even said, you wait about seven seconds. When you pause, everything calms down just like it did in this room. And then he often, envoy says whisper, you can also give a nonverbal. And do you ever watch Dr. Holly? He's good about giving one of these. So it ties in, and he even mentioned how these things tie together to impact students in their behaviors so we can get to the curricular language. And that's what envoy is really about.
Could you talk a bit about a coaching session and what kind of feedback that you give teachers?
Coaching sessions are very personal, but yet open. And you do it, one of the things is you do it right in the environment. There's a part about being in the environment. We do a lot of break coaching, you'll see a lesson, maybe you're doing class tool observation, you go back to an office, you type up some notes and maybe a couple of days later you meet with them. Well, here, someone's teaching right in front of you. They probably do about a ten to twenty minute lesson, depending on the time available. This can happen in the hallway, in the lavatory with the class, or in the classroom during any sort of lesson or transition. And then it's immediate where you have the students doing individual work or even at times, maybe a paraprofessional or another staff member can come and support, and then you sit down right next to them. In a coaching session, you give them direct feedback about seven, five to seven things specifically. You give them praises, compliments, refinements, suggestions, and things to ponder. And specifically, you have the conversation, again, preserving the relationship with the person next to you about how do you think it went? Let's talk about this situation and how you handle it. What could have you done differently? Honoring them, knowing you know your class best, I've been here for a quick fifteen-minute glance. Here's some ideas we've seen in other classrooms, what might work for you? And then they walk away with a couple of things. One, again, a positive of what they're committed to as an educator. They recall the commitment or affirmation statement right away, as well as something they want to focus on for the next opportunity to come in, really look into those refinements. Again, sometimes you're, they call them gems, so you're thinking gemstones. Sometimes you're chipping away bigger chunks. Other times, you're really polishing up a skill that that teacher does well and can be any teacher from a first-year teacher to our most veteran teachers that want to be coached and are open to those conversations because the relationship matters. It's impactful.
Linda, could you just give a quick example of how learning this kind of skill could help a teacher who is working with a student who's culturally different from the teacher? I mean, how does it make that teacher better in dealing with a kid who maybe comes from a very different place?
Specifically, both teachers and students in envoy fall into three categories.
Could you just like give an example of something that a teacher would do differently because he or she's had the training?
The seven gems training in specific or some more of the coaching?
Just something they do differently in the classroom. Kids, the kid is talking really loud.
And that's a great example. In traditional classrooms, you know, you're going to ask them, oh, you know, Mr. Grayler, can you keep it down? That's not time for that. In envoy, they ask you to develop maybe a nonverbal cue or even shifting your body to a different systematic place in the room where students know it's more of a get attention spot, where when I go to this specific spot, it's time for teaching. Or if I come over here, that's time for students to, you start tying different places with different aspects of work that you're doing. And so you build in some of those nonverbal visual cues of this means it's time to sit a certain way or this means maybe later, you could talk to me later instead of blurting out, continually talking and those sorts of things. And it's one of those, again, every teacher has a systematic spot, but those systems build off of it and then you can later have the conversation, preserving it and preserving their dignity in the classroom by not calling them out, by going nonverbal.
And also, I know loud is kind of a subjective term, but also making sure the teachers know that sometimes kids, it's okay to talk loudly, you know, it's okay to wiggle and there's a time and a place for that too.
And they talk about building that spot, like this is your time. You're working, you're doing what you need to do. It's not like they're all just silent. It's not like they're all just silent, pondering away on things. There's times for them to be creative and be passionate and learn.
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to actually sit through a couple of Levi's coaching sessions when he was at Riverside, and then Jared invited me at Bishop. And first, I was blown away with first that the teachers were comfortable enough that the superintendent was sitting through that session with them, but the feedback they were getting and the conversation that was going on between the coaches and the teacher was amazing. I saw a large classroom, I think Bishop went to an EL classroom where there's a small group and it was huge there. It's amazing that you go in and kids may be talking, and then the teacher moves to a certain spotted room and just stops. They know that's, it's time to learn because that's where the teacher is. And I've seen some buildings even use it in the lunchroom, that they know when the supervisor's in this spot, that means it's time to do something. So it's quite amazing to see how kids are reacting to that. It's, I think it's a good strategy, back to what you were saying, Don, earlier. It's, you know, if we can't keep kids in the classroom, we're not going to get at the academic piece at all. So it's really trying to keep them in the classroom so they can learn. Besides the formal coaching, a lot of the schools are just fellow teachers are coming into the classroom and observing and giving them feedback that way as well.
Can I kind of jump in now, Mike, and talk about instructional rounds and those sort of pieces? So a couple of things, Billy, I want Levi and what Heather have said is, one, we know that teacher behavior directly impacts our student behavior. So learning the seven gems of Envoy, deepening your toolbox is just going to give you more tools in the classroom. As well as, you know, one of the big premises behind Envoy is, if I take fewer, if I use fewer management words in the classroom, that allows me more time for academics, that allows me more time for those relationship words. So I'm being choiceful in the words that I use, less time calling students out that are being loud, using more nonverbals, using proximity for those students. So those are just a few things I was thinking about. But one of the things around professional development in Envoy is, when we have all K through eight staff trained in something, the training's only as good as what you do with it. So it's, so one of the things that Bishop and many other buildings are doing is instructional rounds around Envoy. And the instructional rounds is really for the learning of the individual, the staff member that's involved in them. And it's based off the medical round model where staff come together, they collaborate around a problem of practice, something that they're curious about. In this case, how do the seven gems of Envoy look in the classroom? What does this look like specifically for us at Harriet Bishop Elementary? A few staff would come into the classrooms with someone facilitating that conversation, either myself, an instructional coach, or a teacher leader in the building. And as staff are going around into different classrooms, we first kind of set the parameters for what this looks like. One key piece for staff is it's not, it's nonjudgmental. With Envoy, it was great because we were all in the same place. All were just learning Envoy, it was brand new for everybody, so it was a safe place to enter into. So assuming positive intent as we head into the classroom, that staff are doing the best with the training that they have, and that they're willing to put themselves out there just to try something new. As we're in the classrooms, we're observing a ten to fifteen minute teaching session wherever the teacher's at within their lesson. And then that time afterwards, where the group of adults, two to three adults that were in the classroom coming together to really reflect on, so what did we see? What gems of Envoy did we see? As we first were starting, it's important just to be able to label and know, what part of the lesson were they in? What did I see? What tools and techniques were they using in the classroom? And then the piece that puts it even deeper into practice is that individual teacher saying, in Levi's classroom, I saw this. My class looks a little bit different, but here's how I can adapt that to my setting. Here's how I can make that work for me. So then that classroom teacher, as they head back to their classroom, making an action plan for implementing. So that's one way that we support staff, certified staff, at the beginning within their learning. One of the things that we did later on, someone asked the question about paraprofessional, we moved that then to our paraprofessional staff as well, where they were engaged in the instructional rounds. They were going into classrooms to see, what does this look like in different classrooms? How can I take my learning deeper to my setting, as well as just to, again, learn and name what they were seeing? One of the things that Jackie also kind of brought up is, we looked at the instructional round piece for our learning. This is for us, me as the individual classroom teacher to get better at something. But also, we do need to have system checks on, how are we doing on something? We're spending a lot of time and energy learning Envoy. What does it look like in the classrooms? So some buildings have gone to learning walks or fidelity checks where classroom teachers would go into one another's classroom, collect data on, during this ten or fifteen minute part of the lesson, what gems of Envoy did I see? How many of them did I see? And did I have a chance to see them and it just was missed? Or was there not an opportunity to see that? And then we look at our data over time. This last year at Bishop, we had, we kind of built it into our plan later on in the year that we had two different fidelity checks. Then we could look at after the first one, where do we need to grow ourselves? That really drove some of our professional development that we did, as well as later on in the year, celebrate where we showed growth from where we were at at the beginning of the year. So again, with all the professional development, it's not just sitting and learning something, but then how do we directly, how does that move into the classroom and directly impact our practices each and every day?
And I'll just address, when I was in Bishop, watching these rounds with Jared, just to show the work that the pairers got, we were in the back of the room and a pair came in and walked next to a student, said something, and then walked to the back of the classroom and waited for the student to join him, and then they left. I'm assuming they were going to some program. And so later I asked, I said, so what's up with that? And they said, well, had the adult not used that training that they had and stepped there and stepped there until the kid got up, he probably would have exploded and they would have had a major issue there. But because of his training, he walked up, whispered something in his ear, waited in the back of the room for him, the kid waited a little bit, got up, and went with the paraprofessional. So I had an opportunity to witness a pair using the strategies as well. Any questions on Envoy before we move on?
Yes, so I was going to ask about paraprofessionals. What about our special teachers, our basic?
So for us, our instructional rounds were all classroom teachers, all certified staff, special area, special education, reading, math support, everyone. We had twenty-six to twenty-eight staff that participated each time, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, I think Eric is going to talk a bit about, Eric was the principal at Kellogg, now John Marshall, but did a lot of work at Kellogg Middle School with Dr. Holly.
Thank you. So just to frame our work with Dr. Holly a little bit, whenever I talk with teaching staff, I refer back to this idea from the work of Dr. Michael Schmoker, who talked a lot about the concept of a warm demander. And this idea that teachers form the different quadrants, and you can have teachers who have very, very high expectations, you can have teachers that have very, very low expectations. You can have teachers who are very, very warm and fuzzy, and you can teachers that are very, very cold and aloof. And, you know, heaven forbid, you end up with teachers who have very low expectations and are very, very aloof. But the idea is you come to, you want to build and find and hire and support teachers who are warm demanders. The idea that they have high expectations, whether it's academic or behavior, and it should be both, but then they do everything they can in their power to support kids and help them get to those high expectations. And that to me is absolutely paramount, that our teachers have high expectations, both behavioral and academic, and they do everything in their power to help them get there. And they can't do that if they don't have good relationships with kids. There was a great article in Edutopia this week, which is a popular education website. It's in my newsletter for staff next week, about the connection between relationships and rules, and the importance of that connection. And it's okay to have rules, and it's okay to enforce rules, but you will have to have those relationships to make those rules palpable for kids and understandable, because students want to have boundaries, they want to have that affirmation, they want to be accountable, but they also need to know that they're cared for and supported, and that their teachers and other staff truly care about them. They need to build those relationships, it's not easy to start on the first day of school. And so just to give a little bit of context to our work with Dr. Holly, we're beginning our third year of our relationship with Dr. Holly. And three years ago, he did come in and he gave the administrative teams and some other district leaders what he would call foundations. It's the basics of his work in C R L, which is Culture Responsive Learning, or C R T L, Culture Responsive Teaching and Learning. And his most simple premise is this idea of fabbing, validating, affirming, building, and bridging. And it was a two-day workshop, and I've shared this with the board before, but I just feel it's so powerful that it's worth repeating. I spent the first day in the workshop and got some of these ideas. And the next morning before I went to day two, I was in the cafeteria with kids at breakfast, and a group of boys were screwing around, and then I went over to them and I abandoned them. And I said, hey, you know, I see what you're doing there, and it looks like you're having a great time. This is a busy cafeteria, and if you guys do that, I'm afraid you're going to bump somebody's trailer, it's going to be a big mess, I can't help you. And they said, oh, thanks, just for good. And they went out for a day, and everyone smiled, everyone walked away, and there was never any kind of issue or any kind of harsh feeling. It was so simple and so easy, and it was, it seemed like common sense, but I don't think we always think about it as common sense. And so it needs purpose and it needs to be practiced, and that's the most basic notion of Dr. Holly's work. So we've done some intensive training, and we've done basic training for the whole district has had the foundations now, which is the most simple piece. We did that last year. But some of the middle schools and also Bishop Elementary School, we chose to have some of our teachers, and it's important because Dr. Holly will make the distinction, they can either volunteer or they can be voluntold. And we only took volunteers who wanted to take this work a little bit deeper, and they entered into what we would call more of an intensive coaching cohort. What that looks like is, there are ten cohort members in the building, and that is their work for the year. They're really going to focus on the culture responsive teaching and learning work, whether it's the fabbing piece or some of the strategies related to it. The call and response is one of the ones that we alluded to earlier. But they spend a lot of time focusing on that and practicing it. And it looks something like this. So the members of the team and the administration attend a half-day jumpstart workshop. And Dr. Holly really becomes much more intensive in his teaching there. He really outlines customer management strategies, practices that he would expect. And then the teams go back to the building, they talk about those, and they practice those, and begin to build a relationship with Dr. Holly's other coaches. And he has coaches based in metro area, and that's sort of a relationship that becomes established, and there's a lot of online professional development support. Shortly after that, Dr. Holly and his team come back to the school, and they visit each of those classrooms. So I believe that the day they were here, they knocked out all forty classrooms that day. It's a fairly short visit, but they hit the buildings like, it's just like a train into buildings, and it's intense. And they come in and the teachers observe, or the teachers do their teaching, and Dr. Holly's team, they do observations. And they take notes and they're scribbling through it furiously. And at the end of the day, we all meet here for a debriefing, and the teachers get the notes back. And I can tell you, Dr. Holly doesn't pull any punches. There were tears in this room that day. Teacher, these are teachers who are master teachers, they do great work, and they work very, very hard, and they're good at what they do. And they see some things and say, hey, you've got work to do, you've got things to practice. And that's hard for teachers to see that sometimes, to say, oh, man, I have to take a step back and think about what I'm doing. And so we take that feedback, and we go back to the buildings, the administration meets with those teachers, and the instructional coaches who are so pivotal in this piece meet with the teachers, and we start working on those pieces. And there's a weekly binder study led by the instructional coach, who takes the team through the strategies and weekly practice, and they observe one another, they do their own instructional rounds, but mostly it's just a lot of daily practice. This is intensive work. That's followed by another visit from Dr. Holly's coaches. The coaches now do, it's more like what we would do with the Action 100 Reading Model, where a coach comes in, does thirty minutes of classroom observation, then we pull the teacher out of the room for twenty minutes with a sub covering, and that coach gives one-on-one direct feedback. And it's very supportive, but it's also very specific and very intense. These are the exact specific strategies we need you to focus on for next time. And then they're given a week or two to practice that again, go back to the binder study and do more work with the team, followed by a second visit from the coach. And again, okay, here's what you've worked on, what you've grown on since the last visit, here's some more things to work on next time. And it's very purposeful, very intentional, and the teachers do a lot of work. They will tell you, you kind of have to get over yourself, you have to check your ego at the door, because you know, you think you're doing great things, but now you have to rethink some of your work. And there's a lot of planning with intention. He does not come in and tell us, wow, you are doing amazing. He'll point out what they're doing well, but he'll give them a lot of work to work on. And so that's a mindset switch to our teachers. There's a lot of really good ongoing support that continues throughout this time. We have a lot of emails back and forth with our coaches from the Twin Cities, a lot of support. They know that the teachers are struggling and they're in there, and it's hard work, they've been there themselves, so they are very supportive. But the work we see has been exceptional, and you can see that those teachers are really exceptional, building those relationships, supporting their students, and the shifts that are in the classroom are apparent. It is, it's hard to quantify those things, it really truly is. And I tell teachers too, and it's analogous to home repair. My wife will tell you that I probably think I'm really good at home repair, but I'm not. But I have learned that I cannot fix everything in my house with a hammer. I was installing mini blinds last night, and if I'd used just a hammer for that, it would have been really, really messy. You have to have a lot of tools in your toolbox. Envoy is a toolbox, or is a tool that we put in our toolbox. Culture Responsive Teaching and Learning is a tool in toolbox, but it's also a way to focus your teaching and the way you work with kids. And so it is probably one of those tools that we're going to reach for a lot more often than others, but we've found great success with it. And the kids will tell you this. And I shared this with the board last year too. You know, when I met the student school board, this one other student, they was, they say, hey, Mr. Johnson, we can tell that your staff is getting professional development and culture responsive teaching and learning. And that was kind of how they phrased it, that they're pretty up on this stuff. When are you going to get it for the subs? So I mean, that tells you that the kids see a difference. And so we talked about that, now how we get that, you know, we need to get that piece out to our specific teachers, and we're working on that. But the point is, I think that that's a great piece of data right there, that our students see that difference and they want more of it. They're thirsty for it. And so we need that piece, and we want to expand on that.
Questions?
Just a quick inquiry. Members of the school board, community engagement team have had a few occasions where people from the community have enquired about why Dr. Holly. And if you could just briefly speak to that, as opposed to other professional skilled, highly skilled individuals, whether it was their decision or the decision of the superintendent. I fully support Dr. Holly and what he's been able to do to increase the professional development of staff, but it has been a question, I think, Chair Marvin, you would probably agree, that has been dropped at our footsteps on occasion.
And I can address that. Just like most things in education, you talk to other districts that have used them. I get many, many emails daily and phone calls, that we have a silver bullet, it's going to fix all your problems for you. Thank you, no. You reach out to colleagues that have worked with individuals. He'd worked in the Twin Cities area, that's how we first learned about him, talked to people there, and got good feedback from them. After the first year of working with them, we were getting feedback from our own staff that we knew we wanted to continue working with you. But most of the time, you don't just take somebody because you read about them, or they called you and tell you they have a great program for you. You always reach out to somebody that you know, because I'll ask them, who have you worked with? Who in Minnesota have you worked with? And then if there's nobody in Minnesota, who have you worked with? Or sometimes it's one, a few years ago, we brought Manny Scott for keynote, and I had heard him at the National Supervisionists Conference, and I said, that's a message that we need to bring through Rochester. So it's either something that I personally experienced, or somebody at the district level have experienced, or have talked to individuals who have worked with them before, and that's usually what we use for our determination if we want to bring them in or not.
If I could just add to that just a little bit. Speaking of, you know, I am a huge, huge proponent of Dr. Holly's work, and I really, really feel like the brilliant is powerful, but two reasons for that. One is that that experience in the cafeteria, I thought, you know, I've been an administrator and a teacher now for a quarter century, and I really thought I knew my stuff. And when I saw how, just how I can flip a conversation just a little bit, and the difference in a relationship, how quickly that can take place, that was huge for me. And it's like, okay, I need to... And it's like, okay, I need to rethink how I approach my work. And Dr. Holly is good about that. The other piece, and I think this is really, really important. Dr. Holly speaks to what he would call the DMV effect. That our students need to be at bare minimum equipped to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles and get a driver's license without any issues. And what he's saying when he says that is that we still need to hold our students accountable. We have to have an acceptable, you know, this is what's acceptable, this is what's not. It comes back to that idea of being a warm demander and having high expectations. We wanna have great relationships, but we're still gonna have high expectations for our kids. And Dr. Holly insists on that and I think that's important. That because we're approaching culture responsive teaching and learning, it doesn't mean that we're gonna drop any kind of expectations, whether academic or behavioral. It's just how we get there and how we support our kids.
I would also add that it addresses the elephant in the room, you know, disproportionality. Because it addresses unconscious bias and a shift in your mindset. Because when you're able to implement the strategies, see them work and you have experience with success, practical examples and strategies, it affects your mindset. So I've seen that, that's what other districts have experienced over the years. So I think that contributed to all the work that I would have. But just, you know, staff being excited because you've made a connection with students that they hadn't before because they validated a firm built in bridge. And so, yeah, that's one thing that I appreciate.
Well, I think one of the things he even said, on the foundation training we had, he said, a child named misbehaved in your classroom, the first question you ask yourself, is it a culture thing or not? And if it is, you're gonna address it a little bit differently, but as he was saying, we still have expectations. You have to behave this way, but you have to understand that it may be a culture thing. You're gonna address it a little bit differently than it's just a child who's just misbehaving because they wanna misbehave. So I do, that's one of the things I really like about his training is be aware of that, acknowledge that. But you still have to behave this way in my classroom. You still have to behave this way in our school. We're not saying you need to get rid of your culture and your experiences. I acknowledge that, but in here, this is how we have to behave so we can all be successful. Okay, any questions for Eric?
Yeah, it's not really a question, but more of a comment, but feel free to address it. What I'm really hearing you say is that rules, just for the sake of rules, don't work. That there has to be a reason behind the rule. Like in your first example that you were giving, you were explaining to the boys in the lunchroom, this is what could happen and this is why you need to tamp it down.
Yeah, and I think part of the idea of abiding is also to validate part, is to show the students that you understand their behavior and why they're doing it and you recognize why they think that's okay. And you have to explain, and this is why we need to do things this way. So I do think students like to know the why behind their rule.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I know at home, my own kids, they're always asking, well, why do I have to do that? And I can't just get away with it because, you know, it's a little deeper than that. So and I think that comes back to that relationship. Anytime you explain, you know, why we need to do something to students, they're gonna, that relationship strengthens. And they understand that you're not just saying, well, that's the way it is and you're walking away, but you care enough to say, we need to do it like this, it's for the safety of the building. And they can understand that and they're way more likely to follow the rule.
How much do say brand-new teachers off of college need this type of training versus teachers who've been teachers for twenty years?
You know, within the cohort that we had last year, I would say there's a mix. We had first-year teachers and we had some of our seasoned pros. And I would say that what both sides would tell you, everybody can use it. I don't think you can say that there are new recruits that wouldn't get around it.
So in a certain sense, our higher ed institutions are a little short in this space in preparing new teachers for the classroom.
And I think, I'm not intentionally throwing a plug for Winona State University, but I happen to be on their advisory council. They're opening up Education Village. It's a new way of training staff. And one of the things that the advisory group, it's also, the superintendent from Austin is also on there. That's something that we really emphasize, that that's a piece that's been missing in teachers' ed programs is the culture responsive piece. And it's something that not just Rochester's dealing with, but districts across the country are starting that our student populations are changing. So that's something that they are embedding in their programming. Once, I mean, the building's not done, but that's part of their training and they understand that they have to change the way that they prepare teachers because we don't have a lot of funding or time to do all of that. So it'd be nice if they came into the system already having that training. But I would say right now, a lot of them don't, but I think they're starting to realize that they have to change.
And then that's where my thoughts are, you know, again, from a budgetary point of view. You know, this is something we all need to budget for many years and it would be nice if teachers were to come prepared to not necessarily need this training because it was part of their formal education before they got.
Right.
I would also say though, it's a journey. And so I don't know if I'd ever say you arrive, you know, like I had this training and now it's good. I think we continue to learn more about how we can do better with our students. So even those that come with a little bit of that training, I think there's still continued opportunity to learn.
Well, and part of both Envoy and Dr. Holly's teaching too is, as you said, is really challenging our staff to think about teaching differently. Just because you've always done it this way, doesn't mean it's gonna work for all kids. And there needs to be a time when kids can work together and when they can do call and response. And we, you know, as you said, we can never get good enough at teaching. And we, it's really, I think, stretching our teachers to think about how they're thinking and how they're teaching in new and really better ways. We can't expect kids to keep learning like, you know, maybe twenty years ago.
Okay, next up, Willie Tipton is one of our equity specialists. We have three equity specialists and then one Native American liaison. And so I've asked Willie to come and talk about some of the work that he does. They do a lot of great things. I supervised them last year and every month they were required to submit a report on the work that they've done, the kids that they've worked with. And so Willie, if you can just kind of do share some of the things that you do.
Thank you, I'm Superintendent Munoz. Hello, everyone. It's been a long day today. I had, what I like to do is today, middle schoolers actually came in for their schedules and taking their pictures. And I like to be at the front of the door for the whole, as long as I can and meet each and every family, rather than be just saying hello, how you doing? Can I help you guys with your locker? Don't worry, you can, you can contact me when you come to school. I'll be here for you because it's most important to be able to reach out to these families, especially the students, letting them know that they have that support within the schools. This is, we're going, it's our third year at disposition. The first year was a learning curve. Second year, it went really smooth. But this year, we're going into it with a lot of confidence. I'm really happy to report that a lot of our, the principals that I work with are excited about this year. We are already planning for the school year, how we can make things different. What can I, what can I do more for that particular school? You know, so that's really exciting and it gives me the confidence in knowing that, you know, what we're doing is working within the building. So I'm really excited about that. When you think about equity, you know, sometimes I was sitting back and everyone talked about the equity specialist. It was kind of that, that title was really a hot item for a while. Everyone wanted to talk about the equity specialist as if we had these K-Blues, these super guys, that the district had hired, that we're gonna do this really great work. But yet at the same time, I heard the other whispers too in regards to the position. But, you know, one thing about doing this work is tough work. And you have to be tough-skinned and you have to understand that it's not about us, it's about the kids. And when you talk about equity, when it comes from the Minnesota Department of Education, it says that equity is the condition of justice, fairness and inclusion for, in our system of education, that all students have access to the opportunities to develop to their fullest potential. So when I think about what, what the Department of Education of Minnesota is talking about and what we're trying to do as equity specialists and as a district, I think they're kind of spot on. If you really listen to the definition when it says all students to help them develop, that means that you have to treat them as individuals, it's not as within a group. And that's what we try to do. And I'll just tell you kind of some of the things that we do on a regular basis. I work with tier one, two, three and four students. On average, I work tier one and I think they'll break that down in PBIS. But tier one is just basically your kids that, who, you know, tend to go about their day on a regular with no problem at all. Tier two or more, your kids will tend to have some struggles, will need a little extra additional support. Your tier three kids sometimes at times have a little more complications with being in mainstream classes. And of course, your tier four kids are students who need that additional support in order for them to have successes. But like I said, they will, they'll get more into that. Where I do groups and I use a Y tri curriculum. And it's a curriculum that's based off of socially-emotional education with a lot of my students. And I do a lot of one-on-one with a lot of my students. And the reason I talk so much about socially-emotional education is I was listening to you guys earlier talking about kids and a lot of the situations they may find themselves being into and things of that nature. But overall, most of our kids, you know, they just, they just wanna learn. But if you socially, meaning it can be from your economic status to things that's going on in your community, whatever it may be, which leads to the emotional piece. If both of those are not intact, it's really hard for students to focus in academically and have successes in the classroom. I try to help our students work with that, with the socially-emotional piece, you know, by getting to know them, getting to know their families, making sure that we put the right resources behind them in order for them to have successes. Now, I do a lot of one-on-one meetings. I do collaboration with the PBIS teams and site teams. You know, I work with administration, teachers and support staff in each one of my sites. Last year I had a case load of a hundred and twenty students within seven sites. I did a lot of conflict mediation with students. Sometimes I even had conflict mediation between students and parents, you know, just to help them to work through whatever they were having issues with. Affirmancy, we've worked hard with that. Collaging career readiness. And this year, I plan on doing, like Mr. Munoz said, I did a monthly report each month to let him know exactly what was going on. But this year, we're actually gonna, I'm gonna, we're gonna be doing Google Docs with all of administration in all the buildings. That way we can, we can focus in on exactly which kids we're working with, their interventions, the baseline data, you know, and each quarter, we can look at that data. And at the end of the school year, we can determine if the interventions that we actually put behind these particular students, whether it worked or not and what we need to do differently with that particular student. That way we can have that data so that we can look at that and see, determine how we can help them and where were we failing in regards to helping this particular student. I'm gonna do a lot of community outreach, you know, the community focus team. I plan, we're gonna do a lot more work with them this year and I'm really happy to do that. We've done a lot of work at O'Terra's and Meadow Park with a lot of our families there, just engaging them, building relationships, because it's important. When you're working with kids and sometimes, you know, if you don't have relationships with the families, it's very easy for a kid to come in and say what's not actually happening. But when you have a relationship with that particular family and the kid is going home and saying, this is happening, a lot of times when they actually come in, if you got a relationship with them, you can actually sit down with them and talk it out and work it out with them and administration staff in order to help that particular student. So I just know that, you know, and building those relationships is really key. Another thing this year is we're actually gonna be doing a lot of, you know, the parent academy, we're really gonna be looking forward to doing that. Actually, I've talked with the diversity council and I'm excited with them because they have a program called Rise, which is Rochester in support of everyone. And they have the largest ethnic groups here in Rochester. And what the plan is, is to meet with each one of those groups individually and build relationships with them and have, you know, just have some gatherings, maybe a little food and just talk and get to know each other, get to find out what their concerns are, what their needs are, and you know, and continue to do that in hopes that as the school year progresses, that we can actually have them more engaged within the school systems as well as working, working with us and at the same time, give us a great opportunity to build relationships and really get to know them. Because a lot of times we may think that we know people, but in all actuality, we, until you really get to know them, get to know their needs, their concerns, I think that we're doing them a disservice. Another thing is we're doing mentoring. We're gonna do a mentoring in all of our schools. We started last year over at Ben Franklin, we had roughly twenty students mentoring, peer mentoring, you know, fifth graders mentoring, first graders. And I think we have some fourth graders actually going in and reading with kindergartners. And it really, and it really worked. And this year, we're actually gonna expand that to all of my schools. Actually, we're gonna start Mayo, we're gonna have ten students, actually gonna be ten to fifteen. There's actually be gonna, from Mayo High School over to Willow Creek Middle School, they're gonna be mentoring students. I'm gonna do the same with Pine Wood, Riverside, Falwell and Longfellow. We're probably, since I have not had an opportunity to do that at those particular schools yet, we're probably just gonna start out with five in each one of the sites. And we have contract agreements and I have a PowerPoint that I go through with each one of the students so they have to know exactly what it is to be a mentor. But at the same time, I'll be monitoring them and I'll be meeting with them once a week just to see how things are going with them and their mentee, as well as talking with the mentees and seeing how they feel about working with the mentor. So those are, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I probably can go on longer, but I'm really excited about this year and I wanna, you know, I really wanna, and in my team, I'm not just speaking for myself, I speak for the equity team. We really want to really make an impact on Rochester Public Schools this year and with your guys' help and your support, I think that we can really make a difference in our community. Thank you for having me.
So we have, we have three. They're each a Siang High School and all of the elementary and middle school feeders. So as you heard tonight, they work directly with students, they work with families, they work with staff in the building, they work with community partners to help support the families and kids. So we've been really pleased with the work that they've been doing and I'm excited about the parent part that we're gonna offer this year. I know we tried to do last year and applied for a grant and just didn't quite get the grant, but we're looking forward to, that's gonna be a new piece to the work that they've been doing.
Thank you.
Okay, so you mentioned that they're, they're working with the high schools and the middle schools and the elementaries that feed into them. How do you assign the district-wide schools? Is that simply by their geographical location? Like for example, Gage would be assigned to John Marshall? Or how do you, how do you do that?
As far as the community schools?
Well, okay, let me give you a better example.
What options?
Our options, the option schools.
Oh, we split it up. We, like, I actually have opportunity to go, Mr. Scripture, go over to Phoenix and work with some of the kids as well as the ALC. A lot of us, you know, we kind of split that up if we have kids there. We try to get there and support them as well. So, yeah.
Great to hear you're gonna be collecting data in Google Docs, but I'd like to point out from the viewpoint website, back to Ann's question, is that's something that software says it can handle. So, you know, here's an opportunity where it sounds like software the district has might not be utilized to its full potential. might not be utilized to its full potential.
Well, hold that thought. Jared can talk a little about PBIS and the data they look at, let's see, in SWISS. Uh, so I think that may help that. So why don't we, Jared, why don't we turn it over to PBIS?
Sounds good. So I was tasked with just sharing a little bit about PBIS, kind of coming back to some of the, uh, the foundations of PBIS as, as well as kind of a few of the, the key pieces around PBIS. So PBIS is an acronym, uh, which stands for Positive Behavior, Interventions, and Supports. Um, and really PBIS, at, at the school level, is a framework for how we support a strong learning environment across all settings in the building for all students through setting clear and consistent expectations. It's really based around the premise of, just like we need to teach students academics, reading, we need to teach students how to read, we need to teach students how to do math, we need to teach students how to behave. And we cannot, we can't come into the situation expecting the students to know what the expectation should look like without specifically teaching them. Linking that to the work that we're doing at Dr. Holly, home culture and school culture for many of our students looks different. Um, so we need to help students understand what school culture, um, and school expectations can look like through validating and affirming home culture and building and bridging to, um, to school culture in specific situations. Um, kind of a, a few key pieces around PBIS is, is the system's lens on it. Um, PBIS, all buildings have a site PBIS leadership team. Uh, that would be made up of administration, um, and teacher leaders, and at some places, um, maybe s- parents or students as well, depending on, on the site. Um, that team looks at, um, it's tasked with really looking at the behavior data each and every month when they meet, uh, look through that through the lens of disproportionality and referrals. We also look at providing input for student, for improving student behavior. A lens that we need to bring in is sharing the successful and effective student behavior management, um, strategies that we're seeing. So if we see a spotlight in an area where something's working really well or, or we're, we're hearing things that are working well in certain areas, to, to highlight those and to share those with all staff through professional development, um, and identifying strategies and resources to address student behavior in a positive manner. The first word of PBIS is positive, um, so how can we positively address behavior? One of the things that, that Dapsilin asked a little bit about was the tiers. And in PBIS, we often talk about, um, tiers of support for students. All students receive tier one supports. Those would be the lessons that we, um, provide all of our students to teach what the expectations look like. Those would, those would be the reward or acknowledgement systems, um, that we provide for all students. There's some students that need a little bit more layered onto tier one. And as Willie was talking about, different supports for different students, tier one's good for all students, but some students need a little bit additional support. So that's where we would layer on, uh, some tier two supports, which might be additional interventions or supports for students to help them, um, with their behavior. And then a very small percentage of our students might need another layer on top of that at the tier three level, which is really geared more individually, based on that student's need, um, to help support them. PBIS is very rich in data, and it's all, the system is really run through the lens of data and using data to inform our decisions. There's a very humanistic side to data as well, so we can look at the numbers and see what's happening. And then we also take the perception data and what we feel about what's happening in the classrooms in each of those situations. But through our data system, we're looking at the data through SWISS, um, which is our reporting system that we collect our PBIS data in, that all buildings have access to. And we look at, um, referrals through a variety of lenses. We look by behavior, so what behaviors are we seeing happening, um, across the building? We look by location, are we having more referrals in the playground than we are having in the hallway than we're having in a common area? By time of day, is there a certain time that things are happening, um, more? By grade level, by day of the week. Our Friday's really difficult, so maybe we know that we really need to layer on more positives on Friday because that's, that's the day that might be more difficult for our students. Um, and then at the individual student level. From our PBIS team, we don't spend a lot of time looking at individual students, but we look at, how many students do we have that have multiple referrals? And then we dig deeper with some of our tier two and tier three PBIS teams, really look at that individual student level, who needs additional support. We also look by ethnicity to look for disproportionals through all of our data. The PBIS data drives all the lessons that we provide our students. So as we're te, as, as remember, it's grounded in the basis of teaching what expectation should look like. If we're seeing that we're really struggling, I'll use an elementary example, back on the playground, we know that we need to do booster lessons on a specific behavior that we're struggling with on the playground. The data also drives celebrations. Where are we doing really great and where have we saw improvement from last month or from last year? It helps us with our supports and with our interventions, particularly for students that need a little additional at that tier two or tier three level. Um, and then putting things into practice. Again, students need to practice behavior. We're coming with the assumption that students, um, do not just inherently know how to behave. So just as they practice reading and math, they practice behavior. The expected behaviors are explicitly taught through lessons that are developed by staff. They're reinforced through positive, uh, feedback. They're modeled throughout all locations of the building. When a student's struggling with behavior in a particular area, that behavior's re-taught, and then the student practices what that behavior looks like in that setting. And again, PBIS being a positive piece, the goal is that the students are receiving more frequent positive feedback than negative feedback around behavior. Depending on the research you look at, about four or five positives to everyone, negative redirections, so that we're flooding our students with, with positives around the great things that we're doing, also having high expectations and, and redirecting and reteaching, um, when needed. And that positive feedback might look like verbal praise, positive referrals, or a variety of other systems. A- as we know, there's also, um, referrals then that, that happen when a student is not following, um, the expected behaviors. And that's when we look at, um, like a level one or a level two office, uh, a level one referral or a level two office referral, where we support students that way as well. So that's a little bit about PBIS and the PBIS system.
Yeah, just one example, uh, one of our elementaries last year is they were looking at their PBIS data, identifying, uh, a certain time of day and a certain hallway, they were getting a lot of, having a lot of issues. And so by looking at the data, brought their attention to that, and they realized they were sending too many students out for recess down the same hallway. So they made a slight adjustment, certain groups went out a different way, took care of it, just like that. So that's just an example of how they look. Uh, that's not data we bring to the board, that's the data that they're looking at daily in their buildings. And then also PBIS allows them to document, uh, a tier two student who, uh, we tried this intervention, and we can monitor that and determine if it's been effective or not. And as, as Jared said, if we see it's been effective, or child, hmm, maybe that's something we can use for another student. So they do keep track of the interventions that they try with students. And, uh, you know, they may go a few weeks and, uh, this intervention didn't show any progress, maybe we need to look at them something different. So it's, it's, that's the individual student piece of it. Uh, but like you said, he, each, he said each teen, each school has a team that looks at that, uh, data on a regular basis.
How long is the data kept for? Uh, is it around for a year, two years, three years? How long is it tracked?
Um, so I can go back in the SWISS system right now and I can, you know, this is my second year at Hare Bishop, I can go back and see what data has been like for, as long as we've been using the SWISS system. So each year, it stays in there. Probably...
It's before I got here.
I was gonna say eight, yeah, I would say about seven, seven or eight years would be the best.
So you would be capable of saying, on an individual student le- level, for the last eight years, these are the behaviors the student has or has not had?
For an individual student, yes, as well as for a system, what, what sort of things are we seeing system-wide?
Uh, is there correlation with teachers?
It, it can run referrals by teacher as well to see, are we seeing more referrals?
So you could run a report that says, okay, this group of level three students came into this particular teacher and it came out to level twos or level ones at the end of the school year, or vice versa?
You can make those correlations, yeah. I mean, you, you can look at individual students and, and teacher referrals.
And then, you know, back to, you know, a larger question is, as we've implemented Envoy and these other practices, you could see what the overall behaviors of the student body has been. So maybe that gets back to the, how successful are some of these programs?
Okay, um, we've spent a, a really interesting amount of time talking about these kinds of things in, in elementary school and somewhat in middle school. Can you give some examples of how PBIS works in high school? Because high school students are a lot different from the elementary students.
Yeah, absolutely. It's actually a, a, a key focus part of our Building Action Plan this year. Um, during our data retreat a couple of weeks ago, we were looking at, um, you know, the five most commonly occurring level one behaviors. Those are the, when we talk about behaviors, we have the level ones and level twos. The level twos are the ones that result in trip to the office, the level ones we document, we reteach. Sometimes we call them one and a half, so they kind of fall somewhere in between. Um, but we looked at the five most commonly occurring level one behaviors that occurred at John Marshall last year and, um, developed an action plan around that. And a lot of it is about communication and clear and consistent expectations among every single teacher and how we teach those expectations, how we reteach those expectations, the follow-up that comes from administration. And we're gonna track those throughout the year, and we're gonna look at those at, you know, mid-quarter and quarter. Are we seeing a reduction in the instances of those five most commonly occurring level one behaviors? Um, if not, what do we need to do differently? If so, we need to go down to the sixth most commonly occurring and start working on that one. And, and so that's a big part of our plan this year, just looking, you know, we, we always look at the reactive piece, so what are we doing to address problem behaviors when they happen? But now we're trying to really look at, what are those behavioral pieces that we can reach out and try and prevent ahead of time? And, and really showing our students that, you know, a- a- our, our theme at John Marshall is we're all in. And, and the idea is that we're all on board with these behaviors, and we're all gonna be super consistent, and we're all gonna be teaching them exactly the same way, and holding our kids accountable, but also showing them, this is important to us. And then we are getting SWISS to monitor that data and look to see if it's being effective or not. And if not, we're gonna try another tack.
Yes, just a, a follow-up. Would it be reasonable to assume that a student who has started in kindergarten and has been exposed to this throughout their K-12 schooling, that by the time they get to high school, they would have fewer, um, tier one or tier two or tier three? I- in other words, is it ingrained in them at such an early age that a lot of that would carry over, um, as they, you know, enter high school, or are there too many variables to make it?
I think probably the, the biggest variable is adolescence.
Yeah, well, yeah, they all...
Just the very nature of, of how kids grow up.
Yeah, and they all get that, right?
And I, you know, having worked many years in middle school, I can kind of tell you somewhere around seventh, eighth grade, man, it gets real different. But, you know, the, the kids know those behaviors. And so, yeah, do they know, you know, our, our three most basic premises of PBIS should be safe, responsible, respectful? Absolutely, every kid in this district could recite that, to be honest with you. You know, it, it's just the consistency, I think, and knowing that, you know, from kindergarten through senior year, we're gonna be looking for these behaviors, and we're really working to make sure kids understand that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Five-minute recess, so that I only know one of the names.
This is Liaison Officer John Marshall. Uh, we were asked, hey, can we just talk about a typical day as a liaison officer?
Good evening. Um, as Superintendent Munoz said, my name is Greg Marks. Uh, I was assigned last year in January to the position. Prior to that, I was, um, also filled in at Sentry the year before that when the Liaison at Sentry had some medical issues. Uh, it, our day is, is fun. I mean, and I don't want to say that and, and make you think it's the wrong way a bit, but every one of us that does this does it for a very specific reason. And it's not, absolutely not, to be ticket writers. That's, that's not what any of us, the four of us that are currently in the unit, are really looking at. Um, I can tell you that our primary goal, when it comes to our job at the school, is be more of, and, and I, I don't mean to insult anybody by saying this because we're definitely not educators, but to educate the kids on our subject matter that we are professionals at. Give them, here's what could possibly happen. So information, education, um, counseling with kids, and, and building rapport from the high school level all the way down, uh, like the Equity Specialists are assigned, the Liaisons are assigned basically the same way. So we're all assigned to a high school, um, or a secondary school, and then we're assigned to the middle schools, all the feeder schools that feed that school as well. So each building has a multitude of different dynamics, but it's very important. And I know that our current, or our new chief, um, informed everybody about this when he gave his speech at, at his swearing-in. One of his big things is, and I just want to make sure I get it right, um, one of his major goals is to engage in the community at the highest level to build public trust. And he is instilling that into us and empowering us to go out there and do that same thing. So high school level all the way down to the elementary level, we're trying to get in there, make a difference, kind of break down that barrier, I, I guess if you want to call it right now, and, and just kind of build the relationships with the kids and the staff as well.
Questions?
Okay, uh, last up, um, Rob. Did I miss you? I turned the page. Not that we were dragging a little bit, I turned the page to get going, but let's go to Apalabi.
Jared was good, wasn't he?
These are discipline supervisors, so why don't you share the work that you do?
Yeah, definitely. Um, there's some overlap, so I want to talk, um, about my role as a dis- uh, district discipline supervisor. Kind of a subjective term, but really I meet with principals on a monthly basis to examine and identify behavior trends. So that would include like disproportionality on a monthly basis, um, and then looking at problem behaviors. You know, number one behavior, for instance, kindergarten to eighth grade, is physical aggression, right? And then location. So, uh, when I meet with principals, we have conversations about what does that look like at your school, right? And, uh, what supports do you need, what are some different things you're doing? Um, our, you know, so physical aggression is gonna look very different than it would at, at the secondary level, high school level, from elementary. So when you're looking at data, um, we just really try to look at locations, the problem behavior trends, and then align district resources. Um, Jared talked about PBIS. One of my responsibilities is to provide, uh, internal workshops. Um, most school districts, they'll get in a cohort, um, with probably like fifteen to twenty different school districts. And the PBIS strategies and the focus is, I don't want to say is broad, it's not really that specific. One thing we've been able to do is partner with PBIS Minnesota to make sure that, um, we can really tailor our workshops to fit the needs of our building, if that makes sense. So, um, I have three trainers that I work with from PBIS Minnesota this last school year. Um, we really try to, uh, promote collaboration from site to site and also, um, onsite support, so we have some workdays. And, uh, our PBIS teams, one thing that I, I really feel is important because as a PBIS leadership team, you should be a resource for other teachers. So, um, like Envoy, that's one of the first groups to get trained in Envoy. Um, our jump started training with Dr. Holly, that was one of the first groups to get trained. Um, so they kind of get a head start, uh, and they can serve as a resource, they can promote, and then they can work with staff members, if, if that makes sense. So we had a PBIS culturally responsive grant that, that we got, those hundred ten thousand dollars that really allowed us to sustain our work with Envoy, because we were in our third year with Envoy. And then, like I said, pilot some of Dr. Holly's work with our leadership teams. Um, another thing that I do in my role is I work with PBIS teams at the site level and just making sure that, uh, I'm there to answer questions, add a perspective, and, and again, um, just be a supporter for the assistant principal that's leading those conversations. I was at a elementary last week, Thursday, and it was great because it was an assistant principal working with a team of teachers, and they were really looking at the expectations, um, and, and just looking at the PBIS lessons, looking at who's on the team, what perspective's missing, do we need apparel? You know, let's get some family members on the team. So I feel like, um, our teams are, are getting more comfortable. Uh, they're able to, uh, use the data to make informed changes, and, uh, it's great to see that in the fourth year. So three and a half hours, answered a few questions, but like I said, assistant principal for that team was able to get those teachers fired up. They were able to, um, share resources from other, they looked at a behavior matrix, uh, which defines behaviors in different areas. And with education, people don't like to, sometimes teachers don't like to show signs of weakness, if that makes sense, with collaboration. So it's good to be open and open to feedback and sharing, looking at matrices and stuff like that. It's a great place to be, is what I'm trying to say, in regards to sharing. Another thing I just wanted to point out, we have three information systems that we use, so we use SWIS, school-wide information systems, which Jared talked about. And Jackie had mentioned fidelity, so we do a tiered fidelity inventory. The PBIS teams, they take a tiered fidelity inventory and it allows them an action plan and point out blind spots, if that makes sense, within the system. We also do a self-assessment survey. Teachers take that survey and it's really the teacher's perspective on what's missing. So you can plan, so you really use your behavior data, you use the fidelity inventory, you use the self-assessment data to plan, use all of that and be strategic. I'll open it up to questions, if you have any questions, because there's a lot of overlap. Another two responsibilities that I have is I help maintain our partnership with Great Lakes Equity, which is a phenomenal resource. They provide professional development, PD, and so we run Indianapolis IUPY for some of that. Another thing, they're helping us with a equity context analysis school review. It's like the tiered fidelity inventory with PBIS, but with the cultural units. So when you go in the classroom, you get culturally responsive books, the images of diverse students and parents on the wall and representatives. So we're going to be doing work around equity context analysis school review with Great Lakes Equity, and they're going to help us. Heather and I and a small team are working on looking at our class tool, our Envoy, our Dr. Holly work, and just making sure it all meshes together, right, and it makes sense. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Heather, a little bit, or?
Well, we have a, we have kind of a nice draft document that outlines the connections, and so we want to give that to our principals first and have them kind of look at that and see. I think that will help our teachers see that it's not five different things, but that it's, they're all aligned.
They're all aligned, yeah. And then the last thing, and the best part of my job is getting, being able to facilitate sort of school board meetings and work with students. We have some amazing student leaders, they have all the answers. So that's been a great responsibility. One thing we've done is made our student school board members, we empowered them, and we wanted them to meet with principals on a monthly basis. And I remember meeting with Eric, and Eric, you can speak to what you said at first, and in regards to meeting with student school board, I mean, is that, no, we had a conversation.
Yeah, when I first started meeting with student school board, I thought, oh, man, I'm going to have to study these kids, they're going to tell me everything is wrong with this building. And it's going to be really just a big wine session and I couldn't have been more wrong. It's so productive and the kids have such a great voice and in so far that we give the students that voice. And the work that we've been able to do through student school board, it has been really, I think, has made some significant progress in the buildings that I've been in. And I think we can only work to build on that. I'm really excited to work with the J. M. Student School Board. I started meeting with them last spring and just to get some of their thoughts and collect what they're thinking about, what's important to them, and, yeah, that work is phenomenal.
And our principals have done a great job of having a regard for their perspective and making changes. You know, the media center hours at the high school, they extended that. I mean, just the suggestions that the kids make align with best practice. Like I said, they have all the answers and our principals have done a great job over the course of these last two years of really going, you know, meeting the kids where they want them to in regards to addressing the signs that they have. So that's really it, but I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, he mentioned that he does meet monthly with building leadership team to go over their discipline data. One month a year, Carl and I join him, and I think I shared with you in June, conversations we have. And we're looking at comparing, they're building discipline data from the previous year, and then we even look at individual teacher office referrals and try to make comparisons. For example, we see a teacher that had a higher rate of sending students of color to the office like two years in a row, we just asked the principal, tell us about this. And the interesting part is they hadn't, they knew, they were able to respond. I'll give you an example, I don't know if I shared it in June or not, but we had one teacher that eighty percent of her referrals were students of color, and so we asked about that. And he said, well, let's, eighty percent of her students are students of color. You know, just looking at the numbers, we could have jumped to conclusions and said something about that teacher. But what impressed me the first year, we did this two years now, is that the principals can tell you, oh, that's something such, here's what we're doing, here's what we've tried, we now finally, we're able to get him into this program. And so I guess the board doesn't see that, the community doesn't see that, because we don't present that at board meetings. But that's what the buildings are doing with their data. And they know their numbers, they know the kids' attachments of those numbers, and they know the story behind the numbers. And they're the ones that should know the stories and know that information, because they're the ones working with the kids every day. And so I've actually enjoyed these meetings. I know it's been a challenge for these two to work around my schedule so we can do all of the schools, but it's something that I've enjoyed doing and have learned a lot. But will open up any questions that you may have on that piece?
So, Afalabi, can you talk a little bit about, you were someone else. So we did see an example of the site data meetings format, I guess, in June. Is that from the SWIS and, no, okay. And maybe if we could just have just a little bit of explanation, because now we've talked about the SWIS and the tiered fidelity inventory, like, who's putting that information in? How is it kind of coming together, a little bit, maybe?
It's, one of the things that we've talked about for this coming year is should we, at the district, say, this is needs entry for every building? Some buildings, it's the administrator, some buildings, it may be the office manager, it's different right now. I would say SWIS is more used for level one behaviors. Level two, get put in Skyward, and then Carl pulls it out of Skyward and does his magic and creates the stuff that we present to you at the board. So SWIS, and some schools use SWIS for one and two, and then double enter it into Skyward because we require that. But I know all of them use SWIS for level one for sure, and we at one time talked about doing away with SWIS and they didn't like that very well, so we did not do that. But that's how they use the two different systems, and then Carl pulls them out of Skyward and creates what he does.
Afalabi, could you just speak for a minute? Once a month you meet with principals and you go over that building's data and you look at who the referrals are coming from. What happens if you see that there's a particular staff member who seems to be referring a lot of kids, especially a lot of kids of color, on a regular basis and there doesn't seem to be any good reason?
Well, the good thing is when I go in, if there's a situation like that, the principals have supports in place, they have a plan, if that makes sense. When I come in, I have viewpoint data to determine the location of different behaviors, disproportionality data, sometimes that Carl provides from Skyward, and sites have their own data. They also have their action plans, and now we have equity plans. So when I do, when I see that, Superintendent Munoz said, they're able to identify the supports and they be monitored. And then at the end of the year, when we go in, it's that conversation to see Superintendent Munoz, Carl, where we're at after putting those supports. So during the year, the principals have done a great job of having supports in place.
To coach, coach that.
Right, right.
Yeah, and I'll give you a specific example, a couple of years ago, we were identifying a teacher that seemed to have a lot of that, and then the work with the building principal, and they put that teacher on a classroom management plan and provided supports to help him improve their classroom management. So it could get to that point.
We had a conversation with the principal this year, who was planning to possibly do some review on Envoy strategies because the principal felt that that might help with the classroom management issue that was going on, and then also provide coaching support there too. So assume best intent and layer on some more learning, see if we can help that teacher.
Jean?
Yes?
So just a point of clarification. The building principals, for the most part, don't wait for you to show up. You're not showing up to tell them, oh, there's a situation, they're aware of it, so they're developing their own internal processes to address it.
Right. They're required to, like Jared said, as a PBIS team, and then even as an administrative team, to look at data. So, yeah, they, they're looking at the data, they have an action plan. So when I come in, I have data also, but it's.
Like, from the building level, a lens that Afalabi brings also is to connect some of the dots, something that's maybe working really well in another building that I haven't thought, you know, that we haven't thought of yet at the building as well, so that kind of overall big picture to help connect some of the dots, as well as another lens of supports or follow-up, or, you know, another coach or any of those pieces.
Well, the reason I ask, because the, twice yearly, the board receives the data, it's just a data presentation, okay? I'm at least not aware as to what actually, what work is gone on to address or to change anything, it's just the information that's presented. It would be useful, I think, not only for me, but for other board members as well, to know what efforts have been expended prior to the data reaching us to address or manage or, to at least know something's going on versus, well, the only thing going on is we have all these referrals, level ones, level twos, these are the top five issues and things. And so that leaves us, or at least me, thinking, well, we have these problems and nothing's going on. But I'm hearing something is going on.
Okay, Rob, we probably got to you. Rob's the principal at Phoenix Academy.
I would add, I'm also a supervisor, I'm the principal at Real, which is Rochester Academy for Independent Living. I also supervisor and the principal at the Juvenile Detention Center for the day-to-day education pieces that go on there, as well as the same for Von Wall. And then I'm also the principal or supervisor, whichever you want to call it, for RASP, our Rochester Alternative Suspension Program. And Don and I were talking a little bit before about maybe him coming out to Phoenix, but all of those programs are really unique and kind of a neat thing to see. And I think a lot of people don't realize kind of what we're doing with some of those other programs. So if you want to come out, email me and we'll give you a tour. CPI, Crisis Prevention. The I, I was like, what's the I stand for? I've been a trainer forever, and I looked at it, it's Institute. It really is Crisis Prevention Institute, but it should be CP, but it doesn't have a flow, so we call it CPI. It's really designed, I think it's very similar, it has components to Envoy, components to PBIS, and not that Envoy and PBIS don't have this, but it really is a focus on the individual kid. It's really trying to keep a kid out of crisis and when they're in crisis, giving you the tools to hopefully de-escalate that, so it doesn't turn into a big, what the terminology they would use is risk behavior. We have sixteen certified CPI trainers in the district, which means I can train people in CPI. You get to be a trainer, it's a four-day training where you're going through it all, you get a hundred-point test at the end of it, which creates a little anxiety, lets you feel what the kids feel like a little bit. When you get certified, so if I were to certify you, you would come to my class, I can train up to forty people, it's an eight-hour training. Typically, we do it two, four hours, like a Tuesday and a Thursday, four o'clock to eight o'clock. It's good for two years, the training is, okay? And then you have to do a refresher to keep up on it. As long as within those two years you do a refresher, you're good. The refresher's a four-hour training, okay? In the last, it was really interesting, the first time I contacted CPI, I said, hey, can you tell me how people we've had trained? And over the years, and we've been doing it forever, probably long before I even got here, it's like fourteen thousand people or something we've trained. But I said, how about just the last two years? In the last two years, we've trained eight-hundred-and-seventy-nine people, which is everyone, from paraprofessionals to bus drivers, to teachers, to administrators, cabinet members, you name it, they've been involved in the, in the training. Most of our intensive programs, the special ed programs, are required to take the training just because they tend to deal with kids that are in crisis a little bit more. It's, it's an eight-hour training, so for me to go through everything with you, but it's, it's a lot of verbal de-escalation skills, you, from listening, listening skills, talking, kind of paraphrasing what the student has said, to how you stand when a student is in crisis. Probably one of the bigger ones for me is kind of how you say what you say, the tone of voice, the cadence. And we talk a lot about in the training that two people can say the exact same words. And a kid will come in the office sometimes and say, I'm so mad at Mrs. Smith because she said this, and you're like, that isn't, that's like nothing. But it's the way Mrs. Smith said it to them that is, is a put-down. And so it's, we go through that. A big piece on limit setting, talking about interrupting and redirecting when their first behavior starts, to, hey, Johnny, when you finish that, then we can go to the gym. When and then, if and then statements, and we go, we practice it all, we model it all. They're really big on behavior impacts behavior, because I think a lot of times we look at the students and kind of, well, maybe they're coming in and they didn't get breakfast, or mom and dad are getting divorced, or, and they put a focus on, how about the staff? Because we got stuff going on at home too, and when we have a rough day, it impacts too, and to be able to look at that yourself. Talking, they talk about patterns of response. If you know Johnny struggles every day on Mondays, well then what's your response going to be? They don't tell you how to answer it, they just give you a model to look through it as a team to come up, come up with a plan. So it's a really good training and it's, it helps you think about our jobs to de-escalate. The trainer we just had, we just got done, the six, thirteen of us going through a four-day training, and he said something that stuck with me, he said, what is, what impact are you going to have? You're going to have an impact on the behavior, is what is it going to be? They can come in in crisis. I met with a kid today that hasn't had a bed to sleep in all summer. His mom's homeless, she's living out in the streets. He's in crisis the minute he comes in. So he's coming in at a five or six on a scale of ten, and our job is to bring him to a four, not to take him to an eight or a nine. And that's, that's really what CPI is. And the last thing I'll add is like, when you listen to all this stuff, and you get to see it in the building, it's really magical. Like, when you get to see a good teacher working out for a kid and then, you know, Willie's out, Willie knows our kids, Afalabi knows our kids. We play with the, we play a basketball game with the police liaisons every year, just the stuff, when it all comes together. And I don't know if it's ever going to show up on the daddy you talk about, but it's, it's really special to see all the work everyone's doing. I wish people could see through our lens sometimes, what, what happens. It doesn't always work, but there's a lot of effort put into the kids. So I'll take any questions about CPI.
So presently, programmatic responsibility you have, is that data included in any of the data reporting that is presented before the board?
Yep. If there's, if you get suspension data, Phoenix and Real, we don't, have never suspended a kid at the Juvenile Detention Center.
But in terms of our discipline data?
Yes.
Okay. And so these kids are probably beyond level one, level two then? For, well, Phoenix.
Yeah, well, their, Phoenix kids are level four setting EBD, so they're, they're receiving their school in a separate setting. And they typically went level one, level two, and then level three is kind of a classroom typically within the school, and then it's not working, so they, they come to us. Our goal is to get them back to the regular, we've got a process, we have a leveled system, which is kind of our PBIS. If you're level one for six weeks, we, every, our data showed us that we were doing it five weeks, and if a kid's eighty-five percent or higher, you're on level one. Well, if you're in the third week and you're at forty percent, if Johnny's really going to be going, it's going to be a struggle the next three weeks, because he knows he can't make it. So we started every three weeks redoing our, starting it over. So if you do three weeks back-to-back, then we call up Willow Creek Sentry, Riverside, wherever, and we say, hey, Johnny's ready to go back and it looks different for every kid. We've had a lot of success transitioning kids back to regular ed without the special ed supports. A lot of success, and typically the kids are pretty receptive to it, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Because I, we told our guests that they didn't, they didn't.
A lot of success, and typically the kids are pretty receptive to it, so.
Okay, any other questions? Because I, we told our guests that they didn't, we didn't expect them to spend all night with us, but we wanted them to come and share their expertise and knowledge in certain areas. So if there's any other questions on any of what's been covered so far, this would be the time to ask, because we're going to allow those that want to can go. If you want to stay, you're welcome to stay.
I just want to make an observation, and thank you all so much for being here, especially those who have maybe sat through a lot and gave a shorter presentation, but you're still appreciated. So as I was kind of taking my notes, and all my colleagues probably know I take a lot of notes, whether I can read them tomorrow or not, I don't know. But, you know, I was kind of highlighting some words as we went through these, because they were kind of resonating in every, in every speak, with every speaker. Things like relationship, positive intent, positive, safe place, supportive, empowering, responsive, individual. You know, this has been a really, I feel like this, for me, this has been a really great evening to learn a lot. I know a little bit of things. I get out once in a while and I corner somebody like Levi and say, hey, how's it going? What are you, what are you doing? I cornered Heather and said, you know, tell me a little bit about this. And I'm really kind of seeing how all these things sort of fit together in a bigger picture. I'm really impressed with the intentionality of the work that's going on in terms of the PBIS and the Envoy and the professional development, and how those things are all sort of moving together. And they, they don't feel so siloed perhaps. It just, the, the intention, I think, is, is really, really impressing me. I also really liked how Mr. Johnson, when you talked about the work with the teachers, and the teachers being vulnerable for that feedback, I think that's really to be applauded. I think our professional staff is, you know, whether they've been here just starting or they've been here a long time, I mean, to open yourself up to that is really quite remarkable. And I like, I felt like the way you described it was so respectful of them, and that's what we want for our students, right? We talk about building a relationship and having that piece of respect. And I think if we're doing that with our teachers and how we're training them to work with our students, that's just going to spill over naturally into the work that they do. So I really appreciate that. I'm, I'm, I'm full of good notes and thoughts for the evening, and again, I thank you all so much for the work you do and for being here.
Any other questions before those who need to leave, leave? So, thank you, all of you.
We had a few slides to remind the board on the different pieces of data we presented in June. As you can see, the TVs aren't working, so we're in the process of making paper copies for you, so hopefully they'll be coming fairly quickly.
And I think at this point, the question that's sort of looming out there is that we have a lot of really good things going on. I think these were really educational and informative, a great discussion, but the reality is, we still have this disparity.
It didn't work.
You needed it printed?
It printed. We baked.
We still have this disparity.
Are the, is this the same color, are these, is this the same information that you shared on the June nineteenth?
Yes, just trying to remind the board on what was presented. We had...
Because we can, we can probably pull that up.
Well, I think it's actually, I think I put it in board docs for tonight.
Oh, okay. So if you have your device, it should be in board docs.
So as I was going to say, the disparity still exists, and that, I think the propensity is to ask, so what are we going to, what do we need to do differently? Every building is developing a plan, has developed, is developing a plan. And I was really impressed with, with the amount of data they have, with the work that they're doing. What the board, the question we have to look at right now is, what data do we need so that we know what questions to ask? What data do we need right now so we know what questions to ask? Not so that we can figure out what, and tell the buildings what to do, so we know what questions to ask as a district and in the building level. And are we getting this up on our?
If you request your computer or your device now, you'll get it. I'm sorry.
So I need to correct myself here while you're looking that up. Mr. Barlow, I inaccurately answered your question. We do not specifically go over Phoenix and Real. They're included in the full numbers, included in the information that we sent to OCR, but we did, we did not do a slide on those two buildings in particular, but it's part of it.
That was kind of what I remember. I actually decided to punish myself a little bit this afternoon and went through that presentation, I mean, on the video, and I was thinking that those numbers were, we didn't want to be singling out or...
Yeah, I have them right here in there. So if you want, want to know, Phoenix had referrals as far as for students who are Hispanic, eight, students who are black, seventeen, students who are white, ten, for a total of thirty-five. The other program you mentioned, Real, the adult and independent living, had two referrals for white students, that was the total. And Von Woll and those other programs do not. We pull by school number, and I don't see any referrals. But when we look at all our numbers, total of suspensions and referrals, those are figured in there, we just didn't cover those schools separately.
Okay, so Jean, I still, I'm, I'm still struggling with...
I guess what I was trying to say is that, right now, we're not deciding what the buildings need to do.
No, I don't, I don't know that we...
Okay, so what we're looking at is what data do we need?
Or what?
So we can determine if policy is being followed, or if we need to change policy, and if our budget is being applied the way it should be. How much information do we need in order to make the kind of decisions that the board makes? Not, it's not our job to tell each building what they need to do.
No, it's a...
I probably didn't even say it at all, so just ignore it.
No, but I'm still struggling with what...
So if I can try and jump in. So I, I think the intent of Jean, Director Marvin's, is, as we've looked at the discipline data that was presented to us in June, and the format in which it was presented, district, you know, if you flip through the slides, district, racial category, next slide, free introduced price lunch, special ed, limited English, et cetera, et cetera. You know, total referrals by level, by building level, common offenses. Is that what we feel comfortable seeing and make, and having in the back of our mind when we come to make policy and budget decisions? Or are there categories, or there are other pieces of data that we as board members are interested in seeing when we see those reports twice a year?
So for me, just thinking about it for two minutes, so it's probably not really fully thought of. I found it really, really, I don't know, gratifying is the wrong word, but I, it seemed like every single one of the principals did actually look at data for, and they had, you know, didn't all perfectly match up together. But whatever they were using, they had data to support it. And it seemed like they had a fair amount of data to support it. So for me, the way the, the information is reported is okay, as long as I think the, the principals could come and give us an update. And when we're going into the budgetary process, you know, if, but we don't really break out the budget by, you know, like Envoy and, and, I mean, but we do hear about like how, you know, how much we're, we're, we're being, how much we have to pay for subs. So it would, it would be helpful saying, okay, so this Envoy program, we need X number of subs. However, you know, the principals say we really feel, because we're making this sort of progress, that, that it's worth it. So I mean, that's like the whole story that I would, that I think is, would be important for me to know. This data, I don't know, it's, I mean, it is what it is. It's just a real overview for me.
So if I may then, so the question then for me is, do we want the current data offering to change, or do we want it to remain as is? The budgetary consideration, I think, is an add-on. You know, I'm not even aware, and I'm not sure that the superintendent or cabinet could offer this evening what the annual cost for Envoy is. I mean, it may not even be that significant, so we're kind of, you know, is it fair to try to assign a, or attach a dollar value to a low? I don't want to say it's low, I don't know the cost of Envoy.
Yeah, I don't have that top of my head. We get, every year we get professional development funds to use for professional development, so if we're using it for Envoy, we'll use it for something else. So it's not like we're taking it from the general fund to, you know, it's designated just for that purpose. But we, we do have, I mean, I don't have to break that with me. We can tell you how much we spent on Dr. Holly, how much we've spent on Envoy. We do have that, I just don't have that with me.
But the larger category is professional development, not dollars devoted toward data management. So that, that's helpful and useful for me. And then I think Deborah, Director Selinger, had also mentioned, do we perhaps think there may be additional, I heard different terms, gems, levels, data requirements that we would maybe potentially ask of the superintendent to provide for presentation at the board? For me, the data by itself doesn't really tell the story, it's just providing information, okay? The real story, I think, is at the building level, where the principals are doing stuff to address it. And, yeah, I don't want to be, and Director Marvin, you had mentioned earlier that there are some additional resources. In fact, the board, we were provided reference material to, to consider, and we have an opportunity to look at different, what different communities are doing. It's good to be able to say that much of what different communities are doing, we're currently doing. So adding something, just to be adding it, and honestly changing what we're currently doing is a net gain. So I'm, at this point, comfortable with the information we're providing, that the superintendent is providing to us. And as Director Becker suggested, it's useful to have the principals, you know, tell their story, which I think then helps us as a board understand the data. I think that's the story behind the data, what they're doing.
A few things, some directly related, some indirectly related. I'll start with observations on the data discussion that we've had tonight. As, as we go back, we've talked about, say, discipline data and being consistent from year to year and school to school. I, I think that level of the data collection is good, but I've heard we're collecting data in Google Docs, and Skyward, and Viewport, and in Swiss. So I still think the district is all over the place when it comes to collecting data, which from a budgetary point of view would be very inefficient. So it's, it's good that the buildings are on point with what they need to collect, but I still think we need to get to a single system for a single clarity. And looking through some of these applications, as the people have talked about them, I still think they have a lot more to offer than has been utilized. So it's the infrastructure to get us the information that we need. As far as what is presented to us as a school board, I think the numbers, they're okay, but I think, as we've heard from a few folks, it's not enough of the story. You know, we heard from a couple folks that there are some community initiatives going on. That's great, but I, I truly do mean that as great, but I think that those types of stories would be good to share at this time as well. And it's like, okay, these are, are end-of-year numbers, and here's the successes we've had with the diversity council, this is the program that's going on there. Here's how we're reaching out to the parents to get everybody on the same understanding of what the cultural responsibility in the classroom is, is we're a multicultural district.
So are you saying that, that you're satisfied with the information, the data the school board's getting? But in addition to that, perhaps when we get the data, you want to hear more anecdotal information from the schools, from the community about what, what initiatives you're involved in?
Right.
You can't capture...
What is going on to make the numbers better at the end of the day? I mean, we know there's a lot of the Envoy related stuff, and it'd be good to hear that too.
Because this tells us...
Basically, it'd be good to hear a condensed version of tonight's presentation of the data.
Yeah, I mean, because I think it's really, I mean, I think it's really important for, you know, all the taxpayers for Rochester Public Schools to know that, yes, there is discipline disparities, but it's not because, I mean, we're, we're doing a lot, and we're taking it really seriously. And we're trying many different things, and the principals know, you know, they know a lot about their own schools, they know a lot about, a lot about their students. And, and, I mean, I was really impressed with all the stuff, I mean, I am always impressed by all the stuff that the school district is doing to help students be successful. And what I, I find sometimes it's really easy to, you know, sit back and say, well, the school district should be doing more, you should be doing more. And it's like, okay, you know, the school district is doing a lot, and, and I'm really proud of, proud of the district and, and all the different things that we're doing. And I think is a perfect no, but, but I think the more that we can, can let the public know all the stuff that goes on, I think the better.
I, I hear sort of a theme between the two of you, and that is, it involves communication. Because I learned an awful lot tonight. I thought this was an absolutely wonderful session, because we got to see and experience a little bit of what is happening in the buildings, at the classroom level, different strategies, how principals are working with teachers, how teachers are working with students, how teachers are working with each other. And it's great, and it's in this room right now. How do we get it out to the public? I mean, okay, so maybe there's an article in the newspaper, or something's on the website, but I think if we have more of these kinds of meetings, it will show the community that the board really does prioritize this work. We're not going to just be looking at a bunch of numbers twice a year, which are, as you said, Don, don't tell the whole story. It's valuable information perhaps in, in terms of determining, well, we, we are still having some, we're having discipline, discipline disparities at this building, with this, maybe in a particular classroom, but it sounds like they're already doing a lot of work with that. So my question, one of my questions would be... So my question, one of my questions would be is, how realistic or how soon should we expect to see some results? I mean, some, we, we saw some results looking at our data earlier, but the goal seems to be is we're going to eliminate all of our disparities, our discipline disparities. Um, that, that's the goal. Whether we'll get there or not, I'm not sure. I, I don't, you know, if there are other schools, districts that have gotten down to zero or pretty close to it, maybe we should take a look at, at what they're doing and whether or not it could apply here. Um, I'm not quite so concerned about that. I think that, as Ann said, I think we're, we're really doing an awful lot, um, to involve schools. Deborah was mentioning the words that, that stood out to her. I hear the word relationship, 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 over and over and over. And I think that is really one of the big keys that we really have to focus on is to continue to empower, challenge, no, inspire comes first. Empower and challenge our staff and our students to keep working at this and what is it they need? And I hope that teachers and administrators are saying, you know, this is working, but what we really need in this building is X, Y, and Z, and this is Y. And I would like to see that information presented to the board before we determine our budget to say, maybe we need some, some budget adjustments. In other words, um, you know, school, school A has two referrals every year, school B has 2,000 referrals every year. We don't, equity does not mean we put the same exact number of supports in each school. And this other school needs more supports, needs more work, and, and so on. And that could be, require a budget adjustment somewhere. That's what's helpful to me. Don't ask me to tell you what it is.
So, so feeding on what, what Julia was saying is, again, it actually gets back to relationships. And it's one of the things I heard from, from Willie that I thought was very positive is when he talked about going out to these community groups and helping them understand, well, well, that's relationship building. And if some of these stories of the efforts of what the district is doing could be shared with them and help them understand that we truly are trying. And then kinda like as the, I forget the principal's name down there from John Marshall, building those relationships of, okay, asking for their input, you know, when you talk to a student, you talk to them a certain way so they feel they have some mind, you just don't tell them what to do, cause they're just gonna rebel. You know, you, you phrase it in a positive way. Well, if we go out to the community groups and kinda do the same thing, ask for their help, then they will work with their sons and daughters and helping, you know, have more positive influence on them and helping out as well. Uh, it, so as Julia said, it all goes back to relationships and communication. And kind of a, a very tangent is back on the data again. The consistency is needed so the district can speak with authority and have a solid single data model. Just right now, I think it's kind of all over the place. And that the authority to speak to the data, I, I don't think is as credible as it could be when data discussions with people come up.
I don't know if we have, I'm sorry, uh, when you bring up Viewpoint, Viewpoint is a warehouse. Skyward data goes into Viewpoint. So Viewpoint is the hub. And then Viewpoint, I'm not, I'm not an expert on Viewpoint, but when we looked at and compared, we have done like a validity check, how does Viewpoint show up? There are some technical issues where if there's two discipline incidents for a student the same day, Viewpoint doesn't always capture them. So we've looked into it, I, I don't disagree that it might require a little bit more exploration, but Skyward is what we use, cause that's where we enter the data. And if we take it somewhere else and something gets lost, that concerns me. And, and Viewpoint actually has an export for Excel. So that tells me it can't do everything, but I, I, I'm finally looking into it.
And it's how the district does as well.
Well, we, when we went to Viewpoint, we, we tried, I, I think earlier I mentioned we were thinking about getting break, getting rid of SWISS. We couldn't find a program that could talk to SWISS and do what SWISS does.
The SWISS export-
It's not out there. And we looked at multiple places and had multiple people come in, share with us their programming. I mentioned the, the IBM Watson one. They had a lot of work to do, they're probably better now than they were when they presented to us, but at $24 per kid, we couldn't afford it. I'll just tell you, that was a fact, and you, that's a lot of money times by 18,000. So we did try to find something that we could just have one place and get rid of SWISS, it wasn't out there. And we felt Viewpoint was the best that we looked at, and that's why we used that. Um, it's not perfect, but, um, I think it, I think it does what we need to do right now. I wish we didn't have SWISS, but we don't have anything that will work, do what SWISS does. And that, maybe there's something now we can, uh, look again, but, uh, I think it was three years ago, we, yeah, Viewpoint, I don't even remember what we were using before then, we were using-
And, and as I've offered before, happy to help our kids. Software is pretty much my world.
Yeah. So just a couple of things. I, uh, it was mentioned about the, all the, the data research that we've got. And, and yes, I did, did read it. Took me some time because it's not the most exciting stuff to read. But anyway, and I, I appreciate your comment, Don, about, it sounded like our district was doing it. None of the articles said, this is the data this board should look at. There was nothing in any of it that said that. This is what districts should do. Hopefully tonight, people heard, the district is doing that already. It's just not being presented to the school board. And I, a couple of you won't remember, cause you haven't gone through this training, but the other board members remember the, the training with Dennis Teesborough on, uh, governance excellence and management excellence. And I just picked up a couple of things that I thought I would share with us tonight. Governance questions are largely centered around why, to what extent, at what cost, to what policy. Manager questions are what, when, how, will this get done, and who would be responsible? And it's interesting here, I won't read the exact quote, but there's a statement in here about, as a board member, you have to be careful that outside voices try to pull you into management for a variety of reasons. And it's, it's a challenge for the board to main, maintain their role as governance and allow administration and the staff and teachers to do the other, the other work. And then there was also some, uh, uh, section in here about trust. If you don't know it, you have to trust that the people you employ are doing the work and trying to do what's best for kids and not have to know every specific detail that's going on in a very large system to think that we're doing our job. And I've never been a school board, remember, I've been a, I'm on a lot of boards, but nothing like a school board. So I can't say I've stepped in your shoes, but I even, the boards that I'm on, it's hard for me to stay in a government's role when I'm on the chamber board and other, the non-way board, to remind myself that I am on a different level on this board, I'm not the superintendent. So, uh, one of the things I plan to do, um, after January, and we have at least two new board members, we're gonna have Dennis come down and do a refresher course on, I think it's great training. I know the cabinet got a lot out of it. We have some new cabinet members, so I think they need to go through that training as well. But it really helped us, I think, realize what's the board's job and what's the cabinet's job. And there's some little gray stuff in the middle. And it's easy to slide down or us to slide up into your role as well, that goes both ways. But, uh, those of you who went to the training, if you still have your book, I encourage you maybe to read through it. I, I did, just, it was a great refresher for me, but I think it's a good reminder for us. If we really are striving for governance excellence, management excellence, I, I really think the training really hit it, hit a home run, but it's hard to stay there all the time. It's, it's a challenge. So, um, based on what I heard, we're not quoting, cause we can't quote, but it seemed like the consensus of board members was what has been presented, and I apologize, we weren't able to get it up on the TVs for those of you in, in the audience, but basically we just took slides out of the June presentation just so, to remind you what we presented. Did I read the consensus wrong, or are we okay moving forward, presenting what we presented in June, moving forward?
So as I reflected on coming in tonight and the, the board's role, um, and some of the background work I did, you know, I feel like our role is really to support the process and support the work that's being done in the buildings. We need to ensure that it's happening and that there's resources to make it happen and then to ask questions. I agree with Superintendent that some of the articles that were given to us were very much focused on administrative data. I think there's not quite as much information in the ether about board's role with data. So I think that can be a challenge. I think that, uh, between the last meeting in June and, and we haven't really touched on it here, um, the sentiment maybe of, of the consistency of the reporting, what it looks like, how it comes, that we're doing the same thing, because I think that's, uh, helps us be more responsive to it, that helps our community, um, that helps our transparency. Also, as Director Workman talked about communication and how we're communicating these things, and, and what are the takeaways that we really want when we come, uh, when the district comes with our, uh, discipline data, you know, are there some key messages that we really wanna get out and how do we want to get those out? Because we know that not everybody watches our school board meetings or reads the post bulletin or even sees KTCT when we're on for 30 seconds. So, um, you know, maybe those are some areas, um, at the board level, um, that we could support the district in communicating more about, as Ann said, some of the things that are going on, the good things. But we don't wanna dismiss the bad things either. We do still have, uh, we do still have this disparity in our, uh, discipline data. I also think it would be appropriate at some point to look at, as Director Workman said, where are we going? Where are we going? What are we, what are we, you know, if it is our goal to have no disparity, what is that gonna look like? What is it gonna take to get us there? Is it gonna be five years? Is it gonna be 10 years? Is it gonna be ever? I, I think that would be another piece of information that, or discussion even, um, of how the administration looks at that. I wanna, uh, clarify or reiterate a little bit back to Director Schlesinger about the data systems. Um, and I, I do, uh, you know, with all due respect, Director, I know that's your day job, but your job here is governance. So we all need to put our day jobs aside, as our teachers do, and as our family engagement person does, and our pastor does, and our other board members do. But I think the intent of you bringing that up is, um, just a general asking, uh, of our administration, continue to look at efficiencies, continue to look at systems. Is that a cycle thing you do? How, how do you do that? And, and that to me is the governance piece. Um, we just wanna make sure that you're making best decisions on the systems that are gonna help our building administration look at pieces of data, and that will ultimately help us. Um, so that's sort of what I have heard, uh, in the pieces that have, um, kind of come up from folks around the table.
So I, I have a question. So Carl, has most of this, this kind of, this stuff fallen into your lap with the, with the, with the, with the data?
Yeah, the overall analysis and pulling the numbers, it has, I generated, yep.
And supposing you, I don't know how to ask this, how much more does that add to your plate as, apart from being the Director of Human Resources? And I don't mean to put you on the spot so you can, you know, plead the Fifth Amendment or, or whatever you would like to do here. I mean, I'm, I'm just concerned about, it, people always say that we are so top-heavy in administration, and I beg to differ that we are not top-heavy in our administration. You can just look around even the upper Midwest to see that we really squeeze a lot out of our people.
Um, it, it's something that was with, when I was in Carlos Department of Student Services, it was something that kind of inherited then. And I'm, it, it's something that I'm interested in and I have a background in, in, uh, using Excel a lot. Um, so it's important, it's a requirement, and you make time to do it.
However, um, the new Director Elementary and Secondary Education is going to, with some training and support from Carl, is going to take over that, that responsibility. Cause I, I agree, uh, just HR itself is, uh, when you have over 2,500 employees, there's things that you deal with constantly. And, uh, we're fortunate that we've had Carl, who had the skill set to help us do that, but we've realized that he can't do it forever. And, uh, we have reached out to some individuals to help us provide some, see if there's interest in helping us train our people. And, uh, we also talked about, you know, Brandon handles the academic side of it. Uh, and right now Carl's been doing the discipline side, but Ken, uh, Jackie's office take over both of those with, with support and with the right training. So we are looking on how to address that. We did, um, struggle for a while on, when Harold left, should we hire a, a data person? And, and when we weighed that and weighed the work that needs to happen in Jackie's department, we just couldn't do without that position. Uh, kinda back to what you said, we're not top-heavy, we don't have a lot of people, just not having anything to do. We have a lot of, Amy's, has student attrition services. We need, I don't know how many community ed departments oversee that. And, you know, it's, it, that's what we do. We try to share the responsibility of, of what we need to run the second largest employer corporation in the city of Rochester and, uh, but we, we do know that we need to take that off his plate.
I, I mean, I think, I, I, I don't know if this would be a particularly useful exercise, but I think it's one that we should maybe explore a little bit is to say, when we're looking at districts that are similar in size to ours, you know, what do their cover, their cabinet members cover? And are, are they being spread too thin? You know, so where I'm going with this would be, maybe it might show that, yes, we do need somebody who is a data ex, an educational data expert, because that's different from, as you've pointed out, from medical data and, and other things, who would also be able to not just crunch the numbers here for us, but also to perhaps make some recommendations as to what kind of different supports might be necessary. I mean, I'm just kind of talking off the top of my head. I'm not saying that's something we should necessarily do, but once again, at some point, we're gonna be looking at the budget. And if this is something that the board and the cabinet and superintendent feel this is a real priority that would really help us to get to our goal of no discipline disparities, then it's something we should consider doing so that when the budget comes along, we can say, okay, this is how we're gonna carve it out. In other words, I guess priorities is really what we're looking at.
I will take, and I think that's important. We, I think we have to focus on the data set that we're gonna be looking at. And Ms. Becker, you had another point to add to this issue? The data set issue?
Going back to looking at the data, how it's presented now, and again, I'm fine with how it's presented now. And then also going, leading into that, the, the stories and, and I think, um, when Mr. Kaskavard came and asked, he said, well, there was like a huge number, it, it went down. So, you know, what happened? You know? So I think going forward, if you have, you know, it, it would've been nice to, to have the principals say, as this data is being presented, have the, have the principals come up and say, you know what, look, this is, this is all the reasons why, you know, we feel it went down. This is some of the reasons, you know, we, we tried these interventions and, you know, we still need work to do, so that's why these numbers didn't go down, or that's why these numbers went up a little bit or something. I mean, because there is a story behind why the numbers changed. And- And, and I think it's a good time to have the principals come and talk about all the stuff that they're doing in conjunction with us looking at the data, looking at if there's, you know, positive or negative changes in how, how that works. And finally, I believe we do, on a policy level, have, I mean, we're supposed to be looking at professional services every five years. Maybe we need to add a policy that, I, I don't want to do it something just specifically for database information or something. But three years in the computer world is a pretty long timeframe. And software, you know, the Watson Group being really, you know, brought the number down to maybe it's $10 a student. I don't know. Maybe $10 a student is still too much. I don't know. But it's worth a look again.
Thank you.
When we're talking, can I ask a quick question? When we're talking about format, as I'm flipping through this, this chart, I'm more of a visual person and I really like this bar graph that jumps out at me because then I can really see a whole lot of information as opposed to reading it across on a line. Maybe some other people do better with information in that format because that was one of the things that we had talked about is what is the format that we want to be able to actually see the data and to have that be consistent every time we look at it?
So, yeah, there was two questions tonight. Were you getting the right data and were you getting it the way you want to see it? So if you don't like the way it was presented in June, now's the time to hear that so we can prepare for that come January so we don't present it differently. But, so I think it's a, it's a two-part question. The information you're getting, is it what you need? And how it was presented would be important for us because once we land on that, we can provide that. It's just, if you compare Junes to Januaries, you're going to see a difference because outside forces were saying add EL and special ed. So we added that. That was not in the January per semester results. So I've said this before, it's difficult for us to throw a dart and wherever it lands and then you throw the dart again the next time and it lands a different place. We need to land on something. We can, we can produce whatever you want, but we need to land on what that is and then we can do it. It's just, I think we've been up and down. I think some of it's back to what I mentioned, what I read in, in here. Outside forces has changed some of them as well. So my goal for tonight was, what data do you need and how do you want it presented so we can move forward?
So I, what we're hearing is that the data that was presented in June is sufficient for the board, especially I think after knowing how much additional data is collected at the building site. And that kind of information is not the type of thing. Where do fights take place at? Who, for instance, isn't something that we're going to do anything about. So we're okay with this data set. And do we prefer numerical format that was provided in June or bar graphs? We can't vote. So why don't we just each share how we feel about those things? Ms. Linger, how do you, how do I feel?
In my teeny tiny bit of looking for one other district who might represent similar, I went to Rodensdale, it was one of our friends on AMSD. They look to use the, the bar charts.
Bar graphs.
Bar graphs, which seemed a nice, an easier visual perhaps than the numbers. They also used a lot of, well, I don't think they were very consistent with their colors, which is something I did read, that you should be very consistent with your colors. So for me, I think the bar graphs.
Well, and there are numbers on the bar.
There are numbers on the bar, yes.
I prefer numbers, but I'm flexible.
I think you already heard me.
Pardon?
I think you already heard me. Do you want me to say it all over again?
Pay attention.
Oh.
Numbers, huh?
You were giving me the teacher riot. So I thought maybe we were. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I mean, I can deal with it the other way, but this makes it easy.
I'm good with the content as well as, Emma prefer bar graph presentation.
I like numbers. I like numbers. Ms. Gary.
Why don't we just switch it to a histogram?
There's a amount of three, three split.
We have, we have bar graphs with numbers.
Understanding there's some data that you can't.
Put in a bar.
Put in a bar graph.
Exactly, yes. But I mean, when we're trying to look at a big picture, I think the bar graphs really.
I would suggest talking to John Carlson again because there's, can't remember the name of it.
Forecast Five.
It said Pfizer or Ford.
Forecast Five.
Forecast, yep.
Are we okay letting John Carlson kind of call one way or the other?
I'm not, no. I'm kind of like superintendent. I'm going to have the last say, that's fine, it should be me.
Well, what do you prefer?
I, I'm a visual person. I, I like the graphs, the graph we used for when we were showing multiple years, but you didn't really want to, didn't really need to see the numbers. Graphs are great because then you look at, well, this color is higher than this color, that's good or that's one or the other. But when you want to look at like the, the data where we show compared the years and percentage of referrals to the percentage of, of different races, that would be difficult to see and put in a, in a, in a graph. So I think.
Well, we have it right here in a graph. Officer referrals 15, 16 by, by race, right?
I was going to say that. We have both.
You know, that gives us numbers, but that doesn't really tell a story about percentages in terms of, when you're talking about discipline disparities, yeah, you're probably going to have more white kids who are being referred, but that's going to be a smaller percentage of the total number of white students we have. And so that bar graph by number is going to be taller, right? As opposed to when we have smaller populations of our, our, whatever it is we're measuring here for, you know, our different minorities, minority students, is that those bar graphs are shorter, but it doesn't tell us what the disparity is.
How about we let?
I agree with you. I agree. When I look at the bar graph, I see the colors. Oh, it's either good or bad. But I really need to see the numbers to see how bad it is or how good it is. That's the part I struggle with.
Right. And even the numbers, I mean, this, this tall blue bar here, whatever it's for, it says 15,812. And it's, it's, it's a number, but how does it fit into the big picture?
So what I hear you saying is because we, we need the rate, we need the relative rate ratio, we need the composition index, we need the relative difference in composition.
Sure.
That numbers work better. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I have no idea.
Well.
If that's what I'm, what you're hearing me say.
Jane, could we, I think we did land in complete agreement that content is okay. Now we're lapping to format. Why don't we, since we're governance, not management, allow the superintendent to present the information that he feels best.
And we'll use both.
That works? I think I'm hearing everybody say that works. Anything else?
If I could just briefly say, so we should anticipate, and, and we've heard the importance of the telling the story messaging. So as long as there are, will be releases of information that speak to disproportionality, there will be probably a corresponding reaction on the part of media and/or community. So it will be important that a message accompany, if you will, the release of information to, to, to tell the story.
To tell the story, what we're doing. And, and not to put too fine a point on it, but I, I think at the end of the day, we have to agree and we have to enforce the fact that we have a problem. We have disparities and we will not rest until that gets better and then it disappears. We have to do better.
I don't think anybody's, never said that. I mean, disagreed with that statement.
But I think that needs to be our last message because we are absolutely committed to that.
Full transparency. Next, I know you were giving up, but remember MDE changed the racial categories. So when we bring Januaries, it's going to look a little different because they've added...
So it used to be Native American, Asian, Hispanic, Black, White, the five, local. MDE has switched over to federal, which is Hispanic or Latino, American Indian or Alaska Native, Asian, Black or African American, Native or Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander White, two or more races.
So there's going to be more categories.
Right, right. So we can get ahead of the story though and, and inform the community in advance. We're not doing anything funny or manipulative with the data. We're just being compliant.
Right.
Yes.
I think, I mean, I think the communications piece is important and maybe we could discuss that further whenever it is we have a study session on the communications audit and, and all of that, we get a little bit more information about what we're doing.
I know we're all tired and want to go, but help, help me understand the communication piece with, what.
Well, I mean, we were talking about how do we, how do we push out information to the public in terms of, I mean, exactly what we're talking about here tonight, in terms of the stories, the numbers, the data, what does it mean? What are we doing to address it? What kinds of progress are we making? And, I mean, we get these, we're going to get these reports twice a year, but I think it might be helpful rather than, maybe in addition is, maybe a couple of principals could come in, not just at those two times, but to say, this is what's happening in our building and these are the successes we're having. Or here's where the board can help us out because maybe we need more resources. Or if they prefer not to present that, then, I mean, you could, I don't care how you present it. But just to kind of keep us abreast of what's working and what's not working so that at some point we may say, you know what, we just really need to spend a whole lot more, I'm going to use the word spend, we need to invest a lot more in what we're doing or maybe in this particular area, we need to target it a little bit more. That's all.
I, I think my, from my perspective, it's, it's looking at this similarly to our MCA data, which we generally have a statement that we put out every year. And so if we're releasing, I mean, this is, this is a big initiative. This is a, you know, a topic in the community. I, I don't think that, you know, I, I think it would warrant potentially some strategic, you know, press release or something, you know, created on our website about the report and not just let the newspaper, the, you know, the media take the story for us, that we are a little bit more proactive.
We did send out a press release from January data and for the June data. So we, we did do that. Unfortunately, some choose not, not to cover it, so.
This meeting is adjourned at 8:48 PM. Please, every board member.